Welcome to the July 10, 2025, meeting of the Reston Association of Board of Directors. It appears that we have a quorum, so we can get started. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to review the ground rules for our discussion and debate. Each director can speak up to two times on any motion, but only after everyone's had a chance to speak once. That way, we can keep things moving, but everyone will get the opportunity to speak. Please keep your comments focused on the issues we're discussing. Personal attacks and interruptions aren't acceptable. And all remarks, especially the colorful ones, need to be directed to the chair. No side conversations, please, but if you'd like to speak, just wait to be recognized. If these rules aren't followed, I'll have to step in and call the violation out of order so we can keep the meeting moving smoothly. I have a few announcements to make. With all the storms lately, I'd like to give a shout out to the CSF teams who responded to tree cleanup and related sorbent damage. To date, we've had more than 175 submissions for maintenance request forms, most of which came as a result of storm damage. Also, great work by Ben Rhodes and the watershed team responding to algae on Lake Anne and Lake Audubon. A shout out to the aquatics maintenance team for responding and repairing two different, but significant, pool maintenance issues in the last week. Both pools were reopened in less than a day. A note about Acapulco, which is coming up next week. It's sold out, but we do have a waiting list, so please try to get on that. And the Lake Throw Dock Engagement has been rescheduled to July 22 at 6:30 p.m. All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's move to item B on the agenda, approval of the July 10 agenda.
Mr. President, I'd ask for unanimous consent to adopt the July 10 agenda as published in our materials. Mr. President, I'll give the board notice now that I'm going to object to the consent item on maintenance covenant agreement and ask that it be continued into executive session.
Thank you. And I'd also like to point out that item H is going to be pending unanimous consent will be moved to a later date.
A later date or not?
A later date, as yet to be determined.
Is there any objection to those, to the agenda as amended?
Anything online? Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Are we doing a second?
We are.
Are we doing a second executive session? And if so, what time?
Thank you very much. We would like to do it after item E, the volunteer interviews. And also thank you to--
And I'll ask unanimous consent for that one, too.
Seeing no issues with that, we'll plow ahead. And thank you to Director Judge for bringing that up. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item C, member comment. Brittany?
There are no member comments signed up for this evening, but if there's anyone in the room who would like to make a member comment, please come to the podium and state your name and record, your address for the record.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item D, the consent calendar.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to adopt the June 26, 2025 regular board meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you asked for unanimous consent.
I did. I asked for unanimous consent, so--
Are there any objections? Okay, I see none. Move on. And volunteer interviews, item E.
We have Mr. Walter Bloomfield. Please come to the podium.
Welcome, Mr. Bloomfield.
Thank you.
So please feel free to give us a statement if you'd like, or--
Let me introduce myself.
Thank you.
My name is Wally Bloomfield. I am fully retired. I have been a longtime Reston resident. I first moved here in 1977, when you would come west on Route 7 and get to the repair shop on the right-hand side of the road, right before the traffic light, there's a huge billboard. I think that billboard's still there, but back then, all it said was Reston with an arrow pointing left. That's a long time ago. I lived here until 1985, moved to the outskirts of Herndon, and lived there until 1992, came back to Reston. My wife and I bought our home in Golf Course Island in 1995, 30 years ago this month. So I've been here a very, very long time. I've seen a lot of change. Today's, like, just before I came here, I looked at my mailbox, they had the Reston letter. The headline is "More Changes on the Horizon As Reston Continues to Evolve." And you don't need a headline in a newsletter to see that. It happens every day. So what do I bring to the table? My first job out of college was as an analyst with the National Security Agency, followed by a long stint in the United States Navy. After that, I was a government contractor, like so many people around here are, followed that with a position in newspaper advertising right here in Reston, moved from there to higher education, and then spent two and a half years after I retired as a volunteer with the Army Corps of Engineers. So I'm not new to volunteering. I know the demands that it makes on your time, and I know that the rewards are slim, except personal. What do I bring to the table with regard to this? One of the places I worked was an architectural engineering and construction firm. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology. So in an engineering world, you don't go far if you're not an engineer. So there's only one other route, and that's follow the money. So I became, I went and got an MBA with a concentration in finance. I rode that through the AEC community, through the advertising community and higher education, from Director of Finance to Vice President of Finance Administration and CFO. I have touched a lot of things professionally. As a homeowner in Reston, I've seen a lot of change. I've seen a lot of challenges on the part of longtime homeowners or those people who own homes here and rent them. Golf Course Island is one of the oldest communities in Reston, and some of the design commitments that were made there can no longer be met because simply certain things, certain designs are no longer manufactured. We have window issues, we have door panel issues, we have alcoves lighting issues, and I'm sure this goes on throughout other communities in Reston where you just simply can't conform to the exact standards that were set when your home was built. Then, you know, we're also in an area of evolving technology with regard to how people address their home situations. Outdoor lighting is a big example. And the one DRB meeting that I did go to focused on the exterior lighting of the house in Lake Newport, where they had installed, I think it was 78 exterior lights. And all the guidelines say is that you can't have excessive lighting, but it doesn't define what excessive lighting is. 72 exterior lights in 1980 would be a lot different from 72 exterior lights in 2025. Technology is different, spread patterns are different, lumens are different. So you have to, you have to take everything into consideration as a whole. You can't, I don't think you can just say governing documents, that's it, boom, this is what you do. Because if boom, this is what you do isn't specifically defined, well, it's in the eye of the beholder. I think you have to take into consideration people who submit applications. I think you have to have some consent from neighbors on either side. I think there's a rule like that or whatever. But then, not every submission is going to be approved without any objections from the community at all, so you have to look at who objected to this request and why, and what is their stake in what happens on this particular property. So I think that aside from being a professional landscaper or a building architect or a structural engineer, you need to have somebody take a look at it from a balanced perspective of the community and what can be expected to reasonably happen in a reasonable community. And that's my approach.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions? Please.
Thank you for volunteering.
Sure.
Have you had any engagements with DRB on a personal level relative to any, for example, changes that you might have had to--
Only when I bought my house 30 years ago. There were two outstanding issues with regard to the house I now live in. And one was the color of the deck, and the other was the fact that there was a screen door. And the homeowner had never requested permission to put up a screen door, and the deck wasn't the color of the house. So my real estate agent told me about it, and she said, "If you buy the house with those two outstanding issues, you're going to have to go, you're going to have to bring them into conformance or go to the DRB and tell them why. Why not?" So I decided to go to the DRB and tell them why not. The screen door in question was painted the same color as the front door. And you really couldn't tell that there was a screen door there unless you walked halfway up the sidewalk towards the house to see, oh yeah, there's a screen door there. The deck in the back is totally enclosed by the house and a brick wall that extends six feet higher than the deck. So you couldn't see the color of the deck unless you walked up onto the deck. So my question to the DRB is, what's your point? What community standards is this violating? And they said, "No, you're right. You can leave it the way it is." That was my only experience with DRB.
And then the flip side of this, are you aware, familiar, have you seen firsthand any experience with members in Reston who've had dealings with the DRB 30 years ago or 2025? To get a sense of what their feelings are towards what the DRB is doing, do they understand?
Well, I wouldn't, to say of a specific case, no, but I would also say this comes up. You know, when you have neighborhood gatherings, and we've had neighborhood gatherings over the years, it'll come up. Somebody's wanting to change their windows, you know, and what, you know, what can I do about this? I think the biggest, the biggest thing with regard to that is, is that people wonder if they can do things without contacting the DRB. Like, how much latitude do I have at my house without going through that process? That's probably the bigger conversation that I would have had with people over the years is, why do I have to do this? You know, and all those discussions are rhetorical.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, here, oh, Director Judge.
I have two. One is, do you, do you have ample time, you think, to serve on this committee? And the reason I ask that is because I almost feel like outside the board, and maybe even more than time than the board spends, I think it is the largest commitment of all the committees that, board committees that we have at Reston.
I'm totally retired.
So you feel like you have--
I have, I have time. I just, I just laced myself up with two new commitments to be an intermediate ukulele instructor in Loudoun County. Other than that, you know, my slate is clean. I have no intentions to seek anything beyond the kind of commitments that I can handle, but I'll tell you, as given the fact that I am totally retired, with regard to DRB issues, I think that I'm ideally suited for that because I can go to locations that are pending before the DRB and take a look at it, whether it be day or night. So, you know, I think from that perspective, my lifestyle fits.
Wonderful. I always want people to understand how big of a commitment that, that particular committee is. The second question I have is in relation to your statement. You said you went to the meeting where there was the lighting case on Lake Newport. As you kind of finished up that meeting, did you have any reflections on the discussion that they had and the decision that they made?
Okay, I thought, I thought it was a really cool discussion, but as I was told that this was like the fourth time. If I had been on the board, I'd have been out there at night several different times, you know, over the course of these four different times to the DRB. But they had the pictures. And if this house had been the only house on the lake that had exterior lighting, somebody might have had a point. There are other properties, and it was demonstrated through photographs at night, there are other properties that cast the same, not the exact same, similar lighting platform. But it was also interesting that the people who objected to the lighting were not the next-door neighbors. They were from across the lake. So it was like a case of, this is, this is destroying my view, if you will. The design guidelines are in specific. Nobody can, right now, based on those design guidelines, tell me what excessive lighting is. It has to be a feel, right? There were two, I think, two objections to, to the lighting. Given that there were other places on the lake that also had it, the design was good. The lights were not on all night. They went out every night at 10 o'clock. So it isn't keeping anybody awake, at least at night, somebody who works a regular, if you're working the night shift, well, you know. The board was split. You know, the petitioner was successful by a vote of four to three. Had I been on the board, the vote would have been five to three.
Further questions? All right. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your time. We will discuss, discuss your application in our second executive session this evening. I don't suggest waiting around for us. However, we will get back to you tomorrow with--
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we have Ms. Hoffman online.
You've been asked to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
You sure can.
Oh, thank goodness. And I can hear you.
Agreed.
So that's, that's a win on both sides, because that didn't work earlier this afternoon. Anyway, hello, my name is Dorothy. Been a longtime resident of Reston. I won't go into it all. My background is an Air Force intelligence officer, and then I worked the missile defense system, retired six years ago now. Enjoy it, do a lot of different things. I'm really appreciating having time to do stuff like volunteer. I volunteer in several different organizations, but what I did was I reached out to the association through whatever advertisement you had, looking for people. And I checked a lot of areas off because I didn't really know where I could fit. But as I told Brittany, with any of the organizations that I support, I'm here to help. I'm good at proposals and RFPs, did a lot of that with my work in the private sector. I'm a good organizer. I know most of the Microsoft stuff backwards and forwards. I can't walk very well. I'm somewhat handicapped. So I asked Brittany where she thought I might be able to fit in, because I do process very well, and I can do a lot of the things that, well, quite frankly, a lot of people don't like to do. So I don't mind picking up the pieces. So with that, that's all I have to say about myself, unless you all have any questions.
Yes, opening up to questions. Director Fer?
Ms. Hoffman, thank you for volunteering. We have you here for two different committees. One is election, and one is covenants. Do you have, and if somebody can remind me, or maybe Brittany can, we have one opening on covenants, is that right?
That is correct.
And do we have, how many openings on elections?
One.
So we have one open on both. I'll ask that question about DRB later. So given that we only have one opening on each committee, Ms. Hoffman, do you, can you help us understand which, which committee you have a preference for?
Well, I actually talked to Brittany about this also, asking her advice, because I don't know the exact components of everything. I've talked to William and I talked to another gentleman about the different committees. I think I would best be suited for the elections committee, just due to my ability to due process and figure things out and get stuff done. Covenants would be interesting, but I do have a restriction in terms of my walking. As I said, I couldn't walk on uneven surfaces, and I know on Tuesday mornings, I believe, at 9:15, the covenants committee gets together to go out and look at different issues. So that I wouldn't be able to help out with as much.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Hoffman. I appreciate your time. Again, we're going to discuss your applications in executive session this evening, but I don't suggest waiting around for us.
No, I've got another meeting right now.
Fantastic.
Okay.
And we'll talk to you soon.
Okay, take care. Bye-bye.
Have a good evening. Do we have anyone else? Doesn't look like it.
Those are the only two for this evening.
Okay. And then we've got the Friends of Reston Renewals. Those are just via letter.
A. Warren.
Great.
Mr. President, I move to convene an executive session to consult with legal counsel and to discuss contractual and personnel matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor. Looks like it's--
Lanza.
Mr. Lanza?
No objection.
Okay. Looks like it's unanimous of all in attendance. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I was just gonna, I'm just gonna add that I know, I understand the frustration that there is not something clear in this amendment or in the ordinance as it stands with respect to what the scope of something that you're describing would look like. But, I mean, as long as you are thinking about a temporary bubble whereby the impact to a site would be where the footers for that bubble are gonna go, and you are talking about three months, I think, I know, can't, it's different if it were in writing and you could guarantee it, but the staff, in my experience, will work with you on a submission package and a process that is commensurate with the scope of the improvements. So if really something like this is limited in terms of just installing footers on a pool deck for three months, I do not think that they would require a geotechnical analysis or a noise study or a transportation study. I think they would require a PRC plan, I do, unless you could conform to this 4,000 square feet. But I think you could work with them on something that's not the laundry list of things that they might require for other projects.
Hey, I just wanted to say, I think these are all big victories. I think we should be careful not to bite the hand that's feeding us. There's a really big win going up to 4,000 square feet. That should cover all of our bathhouses and some ancillary structures if we wanted. I think a temporary bubble is great in theory, but that really indicates a change in use and a larger intensity that I think the county is gonna view has to go through a PRC plan and us barking back with that may not be received well.
I, you know, that's, it's a really good question. I think two things that I got a sense of. One is that they are very hesitant to start making this list 400 items because then it becomes hard.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I move that the Resident Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those members -- those matters appropriate for executive session involving consultation with counsel were discussed or considered by the board during executive session.
Is there second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? That's unanimous of all in attendance. So I think Director Lanza?
Did they make it?
I don't know that they're back.
No objection.
Okay. And Director Santa?
She's not in the breakout room.
No.
She's not in the breakout room?
She's not.
Oh, but she's on a phone, so I don't know that she can get herself up. Oh, okay.
Okay. Director Santa and Director Lanza, we're just taking your votes.
On a cleansing motion.
Director Lanza, can you give us an aye or a nay? He said no objection. I just wanted to hear him say aye. I'm sorry?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Santa?
I didn't hear anything for the last 60 seconds.
Okay, we did the cleansing motion.
Because I was still on the break. Oh, in favor.
Okay, aye. That's unanimous of all in attendance. We are going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for hanging with us through the break. In the interest of transparency to the community, I wanted to give a little readout on what we discussed in executive session. We discussed two topics, the PRC Amendment and Rested National Golf Course. On the topic of the PRC Amendment, we directed the outside council and staff to discuss the PRC Amendment consistent with the Board of Directors' executive session conversation, to have that conversation with county staff, and also to prepare a red line for the board's consideration at the next meeting. And then for Rested National Golf Course, we are asking Directors Farrell and Joe Shuck to work with staff to determine our action steps to be taken in relation to the Rested National Golf Course. All right, so we are back on the agenda, and next item is Item F, CEO Update. Mr. Cummins?
Thank you, President Johnson. Like to start by wishing Director Mullenix a very happy birthday this evening and spending his birthday with us, so happy, happy birthday.
Can't be very happier if he's spending it with us. Glad to be here.
Appreciate President Johnson and his opening remarks mentioning Alquapalooza. I'll just mention again, this is a big deal. As you all know, we have been flirting with doing other events throughout the year to gauge interest from the community. We had great success last year for an anniversary pool party for the 60th, so we decided to do a similar thing this year, and it, as mentioned, sold out. In other words, because it's free for members, we have hit the maximum capacity of the pool and can no longer accept, you know, people coming in beyond that. So that's a really, really exciting thing. We have a waitlist, so, you know, I would say there may be some additional opportunities. So continue to encourage people to sign up, but on the 19th, that'll be a big deal.
Before you go on, I just wanted to thank you for not scheduling that on the night of a board meeting. It seems like every time there's something really exciting going on in the community, we have a meeting. Like, there's the swim, the dive-in movie tonight, I believe, and I'm not there. I'm here, so, thank you.
Noted. The one thing I wanted to highlight or draw everyone's attention to, mentioned in the CEO update at the last meeting, there had been a request to compile a list, which we had been working on for some time, of items that have been deferred by the board or things that you have asked just to come up, things that happen, let's say routinely, but will be coming up, for example, the 990 or other things that just happen every single year. So we have that list compiled. I'm going to be hopefully sending it out tomorrow to everybody, and then we'll be moving forward. President and I talking about how to bring it back to you all for future agendizing. It will come to you sort of in two buckets, those things that have, the board has already asked for, and when they asked for them, so that you can have some sense of how long certain items have been hanging out there in some situations, more than a year, and then things that are forthcoming, but we know, you know, are coming. So look for that hopefully tomorrow. I'm looking at Peter. He and I promised we should be able to get this done, and if not, you know, just over the weekend, but look for that, and we'll go from there. And then happy to take questions.
All right. We are open to questions. Dr. Farrell?
Two questions. When you talk about agenda-forward planning, I remember seeing a reference to what we call the parking lot list. Is that the same list?
Yes, with the addition that we are tracking how long things have been lingering out there. Not sure if you want to be prioritizing things that have been out there the longest, but generally, yes, it's the same concept.
Okay. And then the other thing is, there was a meeting with our president and the supervisor in May and June. Have we, are we going to see a readout on those meetings sometime soon?
Mac?
Sure, happy to answer that question. There was an email that went out on the May meeting. I understand that there was a question raised at a committee meeting earlier this week about the June meeting. I have gone back and checked, and we did not send out a recap on that, so apologies to the board. I will simply add those update items with the July meeting that President Johnson and I had yesterday.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, hearing none. Oh, Dr. Justick.
When you get a chance, Mac, I had asked at the May meeting about any interaction we've had with Isaac Juton developers, and they haven't filed yet, but I keep hearing that it's coming soon, so I'm hoping that we're having discussions with them, or if that got lost somewhere, if we could make sure that we have those conversations before they start filing, to see if we can get the proffer statements that we would want in on those. And then when you, when both of you and President Johnson have your meetings with Supervisor Alcorn, if we could follow up on the questions that some of the board members posed when he came for Reston Town Center North, if we could follow up and see if he has any replies to those, that would be helpful. And then the letter that we sent on the trash topic the county is taking up and our suggestion to make it as part of Tax District Number Five, any reaction that he has to that? I'd love to hear an update on those two things.
Sure, absolutely. So on the first one, because there have been questions on follow-up on a couple of different proffers, Fannie Mae also came up, I think, in a different meeting, I was planning on building those into a routine update because they just kind of go on, you know, rather than have them be somewhat sporadic, so I'm tracking now conversations or what has happened on all these different things, so.
As to the trash issue, Supervisor Alcorn said that that's probably a lot farther off than it seems at the moment, than it seemed a few months ago, so they're not quite sure what they're going to do with that, whether or not we're going to, whether or not Tax District Five could even be a, is feasible as a pilot, like we discussed, isn't necessarily something that they're at conversations, the conversation stage about.
They have, I mean, they, in order to start that process, they have to give a five-year notice to all the operators.
They do.
And they kick that notice into a fall board meeting, so.
Right.
Things are.
We're not going to hear about that for a while.
Yeah.
I was just curious if he was closed off to it, or if he had any general reaction, like, is this, I don't think that's a good idea, I'm not, you know.
There was no, no response really positively or negatively. It was just, we're not there yet, so I think we'll probably have to revisit it in a few months.
Okay.
And then, was there anything else? Okay. All right. Any further questions from the board? Brittany? Okay. Okay. Then moving on to Item G, Secretary Update. It's Director Lanza. Are you there, sir?
So we had sent this out with the board packet. This is the first one I'm doing, so go light. They're running down the list. I figured it'd be better, just to see if there were any questions. I'll do my best to answer.
Mr. President, I, let's see. Is the, list is organized, if I can ask our secretary, there are multiple categories here. There's open motions, completed motions, and deferred motions. And the impression I have, and consensus recommendations, the impression I have is that items that are on the completed motions list would not appear on the next quarterly update. Is that an accurate representation of the intention here?
Yeah, my understanding was, as shown in the agenda item summary, it's just changes that have been made. When listing the completed motions and the outstanding motions are the list of outstanding motions, even if they were here before this readout.
Well, the reason I'm asking the question is there are, and I don't want to take up the board time going down this list, and I apologize for not having gotten to this earlier, but there are, I don't know, I had like 10 or 15 motions that were, that are on the completed list that I actually think are ongoing issues, an example being the casino. That's on the completed motions list. Obviously, that's something we're going to keep taking a look at. There are a number of items that were with the Elections Committee, and that need, go ahead.
Those items that you're referencing were closed out under the previous secretary? The items that you just noted? So they were closed out prior to Mr. Lanza becoming the secretary?
Well, all I would suggest is that there were a number of actions that we forwarded to the Elections Committee that nothing's happened with them, and I'm happy, I don't want to take up the board time going through these, but it's not a short list. And there, I would want them to be, because they're ongoing and open items, I would want them to be on the next quarterly report, as opposed to just not being here at all.
Yeah.
So there's that. The other thing is, there were some updates that, let's see, Item 14, which is the goat trail at Lake, at Larka, I mentioned this to council, it's my understanding that Larka has completed their draft of an agreement and are circulating among the Larka Board for forwarding to us. That's what a Larka Board member told me, so I don't know where we stand on that.
I received that earlier this week.
Can you, can you get on the mic?
I received that earlier this, earlier this week. Significant changes, it's going to be a little bit of, I didn't dig into it yet, I'll probably dig into it tomorrow.
That's fine. This is, what we have heard back from Larka is the point, that, that, you know, we're not, we're not standing here waiting for Larka to get back to us. They have gotten back to us, and I think that somewhat was a product of board-to-board conversation, by talking to my friends on the Larka Board, saying, hey, guys, can we get this moving? I don't want to take too much credit for that, but who knows, maybe they were going to do it anyway. There's some others like that, and I'm happy to get together with Director Lanza and maybe go over the things that I'm concerned about, that we keep on the open list so that they don't fall through the cracks, if that's okay with the board. I mean, I, you know, if you want to go through the list, I'm happy to do it, but I think you've got better uses of your time.
I think the board agrees. Director Lanza, you're good with Director Farrell's suggestion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic. Any other question?
Be included in that conversation?
You want to be included in that conversation, Director Santa?
I probably have some context as to why they remove, I'd like to be included.
Okay.
Happy to.
I would greatly appreciate that, Izzy. Thank you.
You did a phenomenal job, my friend.
Only three more.
Of course, we'll blame everything that's wrong on you, Director Santa.
And Director Lanza, you said you only have three more so far, so.
I just wanted to say that Item 52 and 62, I believe those are referenced in our packet for tonight, and Item 108, which is seven on discussion items, that's going to come to the board shortly, so stay tuned. And I don't know what Item Six means on the executive session, so. And I don't know what Item Six means on the executive session, so.
The only other thing, Mr. President, I'll note, is that there appeared to be a page missing. Items 51 and 53 through 53 on the completed list was not in my package, so maybe we can get an extra sheet. And before I had that conversation, 51 through 53.
Are missing?
That sheet was missing in, on the completed list. So, maybe before Director Santa and Director Lanza and myself had that conversation, we can get that sheet.
We're sending you the electronic copy, John. You're going to look, you're going to have to use Excel.
It's not on Excel either. I looked.
So, it's not, so it doesn't exist?
It's not, well, I don't know, but, but we make reference, we make reference to it. I'm sorry? 51 through 53. There was a cross-reference to 53, Mr. President, and I went looking for it.
Mm-hmm. And no reference.
And it was.
Wasn't there. Okay.
51 exists under deferred motions.
Yes, under deferred.
Okay.
What was the other one? I'm sorry.
Fifty, we can do this later.
51 and 54.
Leave that to the working group.
53.
Let them work that stuff out.
So, maybe our numbering is not consistent or something? I don't know.
But buckets, it's ended up open.
Yeah. Okay.
Director Duscha, couple of questions.
Yes. I'd like to request for Item Number 8.1, that we add the word broker, because I think that has been what has been a confusion point in past years, and it wasn't in, it wasn't in the explanation, so if we could add the word broker. I'm glad to hear Lake and Goat Trail has moved, because I saw that it had it, and I was going to suggest that we do something on it. So, if it's moved, then we can wait for council to review that. That's good news. The Item Number 35 is called the Apartment Owner. I'm calling it the Apartment Owner Letter. That's my abbreviation. I think that Director Farrell asked for some, the board to get sent a copy of that communication at the last meeting, the letter that we sent to apartment owners, and then we started the conversations with them. And so, I was wondering.
The TSA apartment owners.
TSA apartment owners. So, I was wondering if we, if we could just follow up and get that letter, because we didn't get it after the last meeting. Is that okay?
I'm not sure we're sure what letter you're referencing.
So, the one where we were going out to apartment owners and explaining to them that they are essentially paying in when their fellow apartment.
We, that motion lost.
There was a motion lost.
That motion lost?
That motion lost.
Okay. I thought that you guys already.
There is another.
There's something you asked for last time.
There is, if you look at that list.
Yeah.
We're supposed to be communicating with the TSA apartment owners.
Right.
To get, to explain to them why they should join.
Mm-hmm.
And that, I haven't seen anything about that. I haven't seen a letter, communication, or description of that activity.
So, maybe we don't, we haven't done it yet.
And this, there's a, that staff is going to return to the board directory with an update in fall of 2025. So, that was pending.
We actually came back to the board and talked about that as part of our outreach effort to get new members into the association. And you may recall that I have taxed the Communications Department of putting together a marketing package, other than just the general speaking points about why you want to be an RA. And we had talked about getting that done over this summer, so we're on track for that. And you will see in the parking lot items that we deliver tomorrow, that there's an upcoming at some point update on some of those efforts.
Great.
Okay, so there wasn't, there was, there's not a letter yet, but there will be communication. Okay, so that makes sense. Thank you. I was confused. I thought we asked for it last time, and you said yes. Number 53 is the Election RFP, which I think just recently closed, and I, that typically will not rise to the level of over $100,000. We typically spend about 80. It could with a new vendor, I don't know. But I've gotten a sense from the board in the past that it, that is a process and a vendor that we have interest in. And so, I was wondering from the rest of the board, if it's something that we would like to see, even though it doesn't pass the threshold, or get some type of update of how the RFP process went, or if we might be switching vendors, or, or if that time has passed, and people don't.
That's for the county major.
Care.
Per this, it says that the RFP is, wasn't due to be released until June 16th.
And I think it was due back seven, eight, or I'm trying to do it from memory.
The RFP went out to all of the vendors on the 16th of June, and is due back on the 14th of July.
Okay.
So, I was thinking, do you, do we want an update after the RFP comes back, and staff have had a chance to vet things with whatever their final recommendation is? Or it's not going to exceed $100,000? Do you, do you just want Mac to move forward with it without us?
I'll comment. I think an informational update would be appropriate, but not more than that.
Yes.
Any update would, I would urge to be in executive session, as it would be a, I think, contractual.
No other.
Mr. President, Director Lanza has his hand up.
Thank you. Director Lanza?
Just my personal opinion on this, I don't know if we necessarily need to spend time on that until it's closer to making the decision on a vendor to go forward with.
How do you want to make that decision?
My opinion on that is, there are several things that the board brought up as things we would like to see from this vendor, which somewhat prompted the RFP. And if those are still of interest, then we should probably check in with staff before we sign a contract, and know what we are getting, and what we might not be getting, and, you know, how important those things are to us. And a lot of it had to do with reporting of different types of demographic data that the current vendor couldn't give us.
It sounds like a motion might be.
I could have just added, the committee actually had a pre-proposal conference on Tuesday, and six vendors attended that conference. Just to go over some of that information, we had Election Trust, the Inspectors of Election, Election Buddy, Survey and Ballot Systems, E-Ballot, and a sister company to Election Trust, Lumi Global was in attendance. So, currently, we have several interested parties who will be looking forward to put forth a proposal. The committee is looking to reach out to vendors who they would like to shortlist after they receive the proposals, no later than the 29th of July. And then, they'll be reviewing those proposals, or not reviewing them, but they'll be going, inviting those vendors to come back sometime in August to do a live demonstration or a virtual demonstration, whichever is preferential. And at that time, the committee will make a decision come September. That's the tentative timeline that we have in place right now. So, you know, any questions that you want me to go back to the committee, or any information that you want me to come back to the committee with, anticipate us having another work session sometime this, either later this month, before that, that demonstration happens, or before they're notified about the shortlist. And so, I'd be happy to carry that information forward and give it to the committee. And we have several of the committee chair and the vice chair on tonight. However, I don't know how long they'll be on, so.
Thank you for pointing that out. I guess then I will motion that staff bring back the, bring back an informational update prior to signing a contract with a election vendor, ideally before the September, no later than the end of September 2025.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Comments?
Maybe one quick question. The current incumbent vendor is in telescan, is that right? And they're not bidding?
We did not consider them due to several issues we experienced.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, yes, Mac?
Just want to ask a clarifying question, make sure I'm clear. I mean, you're looking for an informational item. Who submitted? Who brought what skill sets? Or are we looking for a discussion and decision point?
I hear this as a, just an informational update.
So, scheduled for a board meeting, or just sent out as an informational update?
I'd like it to be in a board meeting in executive session.
Okay.
Since it's pending contract, it would be in executive session. Tony, am I right on that? Thank you.
Just a clarification. Wouldn't that be part of the decision to, when the staff brings their selection to the board, and it's discussed in the executive session, as far as how many, who, and so on, what was the decision like, and so on? Isn't that part of that activity?
It normally would be only for contracts over $100,000, and this one probably is going to be somewhere between 80 and 100, is my guess. So, it might be $95,000, and then we, it would, it would not come to us.
Thank you.
But because there were so many board suggestions on this election process, and changes, and reports, and it, I felt like it might be something the board might want to hear about before a contract is signed.
That it would rise to the level of the, of a board briefing.
So, could, could that be combined with the award of the contract? Or is it separate?
We wouldn't have to vote on the contract if it's less than $100,000.
Got it.
So, Mac would be doing it on his own, and would do it without us at, at all.
Just, just one last thing, just, I'm a bit thick today. So, we know that it's less than 100K for this contract, for this RFP.
We don't know.
We don't have a number, yeah.
Likely.
Like.
Historically, what we spent. Good enough. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Further comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Director Lanza?
Aye.
And Director Santa? Director Santa, you're on mute, just in case.
You can dial star six to unmute yourself.
All right. Well, it's.
It's eight.
Seven.
Is she off?
She's, she's just there on mute. All right, so we've got seven in favor. An unknown vote. What do we do with an unknown? Is that an extension? Okay. So, it's 701.
And then, Item Number 14 is on the new closed list, and it's, it's for the report that we get on year-end operating cash. And I just wanted to make sure that that was, that moved into a standard operating procedure area for March every year, so that we don't lose sight of it, because then I'm fine with closing it out. And I, I see Mr. Lusk nodding his head, so.
Maybe we should, maybe we can just remove it from the motion tracker?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because it's on the closed list, I think it does remove, and I want to make sure we don't lose that it's done every year.
These are historical.
Can I, can I say my piece really quickly?
Yes, please.
Whatever happened, we have horrible tech issues. It had me, as a host, muted me, and I couldn't unmute myself, but I was in favor of this, just in case you were wondering.
So, it's.
I'm going to start sending Tony my vote.
Tony, I'm listening.
Because everything's going haywire today.
Thank you, Director Santa.
Thank you.
She was a yes vote on the last, the year-end.
Director Santa, you might be able to help with this one. And Director Lanza, this actually might even be a question for your soon-to-be working group. When a motion goes closed, it's not deleted, correct? It's, it's, when, I was still secretary, we didn't delete them, we kept them for historical record. Yeah. Okay. So, it'll be, it'll still be there even after it's closed.
And maybe that's changed. Like, we used to keep them on the Excel file, but we would take them out of the next secretary's report, so I didn't have to keep rereading closed motions.
We're happy to do it whatever way the board wants. I think the last time, and the reason why we have it, is because there was a confusion about what happened to this motion. I thought this was still an open motion, and so we kept the closed motions on the spreadsheet so that you could see that they were closed, it didn't just disappear.
Right.
So, that's why they're still there, and it's been that way since when Travis was the secretary. But we can change that if it's, if that's the pleasure of the board.
And I'd prefer that we not delete them for historical record, but if we can just use the Excel filter feature, and just filter out all the completed ones, then, and not provide that.
So, you don't want to end the packet, is what we're asking for clarification on?
Yeah.
Okay.
The quarterly report is in our records, so you're going to see, if you wanted to go back and see the quarterly report from a while ago, you just go back to that.
But then you have to go through this. You have to go through like a PowerPoint, rather than an Excel spreadsheet, so we've got a running tally. It's a lot more efficient to do it this way.
But then I have to read it.
No, you don't.
No.
It's filtered, it's hidden.
He's saying to hide it.
You never have to look at it again. Pretend it's not there.
That's where I want to get to.
There you go.
I only want to have open items.
I think we have consensus.
See no evil.
Took a lot of reading. And I have one more suggestion, and that's our CEO. When I got to the consensus recommendation section, those, I noticed tend to be a lot of my questions. And so, I think that those are prime for CEO update when you have them items, because then I won't ask about them repeatedly. But I think that that's just a suggestion, is they tend to be the ones that I'm like, oh, Mac will know the answer to this question, and if they were in the CEO update, then I wouldn't ask about them. But I appreciate that section a lot, because it just, it gives a sense of how that board meeting went, and what the items that we agreed to were. That's all I have. Thanks.
Awesome. Further questions? More comment? All right, moving on. Thank you very much for that update, Director Lanza. Item H has been moved, so we are going to move to the budget suggestion cost estimates. Mr. Verne?
Okay, thank you. As was in the packet, but I'll kind of quickly recap. I mean, there are 42 budget suggestions that were moved forward to be priced by staff, and to get a fiscal committee recommendation. And in the packet, we included the spreadsheet that basically has that pricing, has some comments from staff, and also fiscal's recommendation. You know, did not intend to walk through the 42 items, but we're happy to take any questions about the pricing or comments. And I have emailed out a spreadsheet asking for board votes, because as a reminder, we're not to decide anything tonight. It's in the meeting in two weeks, when the board is supposed to make their decision of which ones they want to move forward, you know, for inclusion in the Draft One budget. So, you know, we're trying to get some votes ahead of time to try and make that meeting more efficient in two weeks. So, we'll get the votes in, and do some sorting on that, and probably break them into a couple buckets with some recommendations, to try and make the discussion on the 24th more efficient. I'll send out a reminder email, but it's the 14th that those votes are due. Three of you have already sent in your votes, so thanks for that, and I'll send a reminder out as well. But, you know, that's really all I had to discuss, but we're happy to take questions on the pricing or comments that we gave.
Question?
Please.
Yeah.
Just one quick question for you. Looking at the numbers, it would be very helpful for me, and I would hope for the rest of the board members, for you to describe, what sort of process did you go through to come up with these numbers? For example, did you call vendors? Did you talk, did you talk to others, and so on?
There were a couple that were in my area, that, you know, I did some analysis, like, for example, the quarterly assessment, I did some analysis, but the bulk of them were in Pete's area, and I think he worked with his department directors to get their cost estimates. I think, for the most part, they use kind of historical knowledge to get those estimates. I don't think we've reached out to vendors. Pete might be able to add more.
Yeah, we tend to use parallel projects that we've done in the past, so that's, that's how we can come up with these numbers.
Okay.
And if I could just add one comment, it might help some folks out. So, the very, the very last suggestion, I believe it's number 42. So the very, the very last suggestion, I believe it's number 42, is the crosswalk at Lake Thro. Staff may have had the wrong idea of what was being asked, that has been cleared up by some members on Upper Lakes Drive.
Okay.
So just to get, to make sure everyone understands the ask, the RA Trail on Upper Lakes Drive connects to a marked crosswalk that is close to the intersection, but is not the intersection.
It is very dangerous there.
There is a crosswalk at the Upper Lakes Drive Sunrise Valley intersection. So the request is to bring the RA Trail closer or to that intersection so that you can be on the trail and then cross at the intersection. So we will update that request.
Thank you.
When the packet comes out next Friday.
Thank you.
Director Mullenix?
If I may make a comment, you'll notice the fiscal committee column and there are indications of no opinion, no and yes. That is simply the fiscal committee's interpretation. Correct me if I mischaracterize this, but fiscal committees review and interpretation on whether this activity would be beneficial for RA members.
Okay.
Or not, or no opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Director Santa's asking, trying to ask a question.
Director Santa?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a question for Peter on item 11. Or is that one supposed to mean that, because we have, what, 51? How many tennis courts do we have? 51?
55.
54, but we don't have that many gates, do we?
So we're talking about gates? This is the question, correct?
Yeah, this was for locks on tennis court gates.
So the locations would be closer to 10, maybe 12? I don't have the number of locations memorized, but it's not 55 times that number, it's the number of locations of tennis courts.
Okay, can you then, for the next draft or just even in the SharePoint file, can you just update column T just to know what the actual aggregate number is?
Sure.
That'd be helpful. And then on item, sorry, my follow-up is on item 12, the monitoring system. You said staying costs as wiping passes. Are you suggesting that the solution that we have for 11 is applicable for monitoring as well?
So, yes, I interpret 11 and 12 as trying to achieve the same goal. We want to know who's on the courts and we want data to tell us how often people are using the courts. That's how I interpret them both. Perhaps there's a different thought, but that's how I interpreted them.
Your interpretation is correct.
So we're not. Okay.
So the goal is to find a solution to answer those questions. That's, that's why the answer is the same to both.
May I ask us one quick question? On some of these, I saw numbers and, you know, the number of wastebaskets or whatever times the cost and it's this much. And I noticed on some of them, you, there was a mention about maintenance and operation and so on. So just to be complete, I think it would make more sense to not just look at what it takes to put them there.
Sure.
But I think the operation part should be included in there as well.
So there's one specifically, and I'll shout out to the CSF team, who I'm sure is tuned in to this meeting. Every time we talk about adding a trash can, someone has to empty the trash can. So every time I say, hey, guys, let's put out some more trash cans, they politely remind me that someone has to go empty those trash cans. So I'm happy to include that, that's a good idea.
Yeah, sort of sometimes referred to as full cost accounting.
Yeah, on that one, it says $1,500 per can. So are we looking at that as like per year? How, what's the amount of time that's going to take to get somebody to go out there and pick up some trash?
So the 1,500 number, so we do those, it's not wood anymore, it's a synthetic cover, but we put those decorative covers around the trash cans, that's why it's $1,500. So that's not an ongoing every year cost, that's a purchase install cost. Then the cost that Director Mappar is talking about is if we're adding 15 trash cans, do we need to add a staff member or is it more time? That's what he's asking.
So you've got your own end costs then?
Yes.
Okay, full cost, cool. Thank you.
Sir?
Oh, Director Mappar.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up with that because we had in that list, that secretary's list, one of the items we've given is to change to, from wood to that.
Yep.
Trex or whatever it is.
Correct.
And that you all were doing that operationally and didn't need a motion from the board, God bless, and that you're successfully getting that done. So that price point is net of that exercise, right?
Correct, so that exercise, so just so everyone is aware, there was a motion maybe two years ago.
Yeah.
To replace all of the decorative around the trash cans, that will be completed this year. So it's possible that that money could be, the money for new trash cans could come from operating dollars, I believe is what Director Farrell's asking, so we can confirm that for the next meeting. Instead of, instead of net new, we might be able to fund it from current operating.
That was my, that was the point, because when I looked at that. The other thing is, and I don't want there to be any confusion here, I'm looking at item 35, which is one of my hobby horses. You're saying that we can take care of the terracing out of operating funds, current, I'm guessing current year operating funds or next year's operating funds?
So this is, so everyone is aware, this is the terracing at the running cedar ball field, that's what we're talking about, right?
That's right. Getting rid of this slip and fall hazard.
Right, so our idea is that we would find some ways to either get, you know, when I say railroad tie, everyone knows what I'm talking about, sort of a longer big piece of wood. And we can find some ways to work them into the hill to create the terracing that Director Farrell is talking about instead of going down a more engineered route. We know pretty explicitly that the neighbors are not super interested in a pathway or something, or actual stairs, so this would be a more natural solution that I think we can work out internally.
Which, which addresses the slip and fall issue. And, and so I just want to clear, I already voted here, I said yes, but I was saying yes to do it with operating funds and not have it in a capital expense because we're saying that we can do this with operational funds. And I know maybe somebody else may have voted no thinking that it was a capital expense. I don't think we need to list this on our CIP because we can get it done with operational funds. So, you know, I apologize for the confusion, but I didn't want, I didn't want somebody voting no thinking we shouldn't do this unless someone actually thinks we shouldn't do it and God bless, I'm happy to have that conversation among my fellow board members. But that's why this can be a little confusing in that we can take care of this with operational funds, it doesn't need to be a capital budget item.
Director Bishop?
I had that same question because I did exactly what he said, because it said operating I wrote on my list, no. So what is our philosophy? Because there were a few on here that said they could come out of operating fund and I, I wrote no thinking the board doesn't have to fund it.
I did the same thing.
So what, which way are we going?
Maybe we can go back and change our vote to NA if we're being told it's operational so that we don't have to act and we're not sending the staff confusing messages or something.
See, I intentionally didn't do NA because last time I added things, I didn't want to confuse the process and it asked us to do yes or no, so I went with yes or no. And if we can stick with no, if we just, since there are only three responses provided so far, I think we can say if an item is being, coming out of operating funds, we just say no. The no is the.
Whatever way you want to go, I'm good with that.
My suggestion would be, if you think you want to fund the item, vote yes. And the reason is, we're still looking at the operating budget and what we can afford to fund out of the operating budget in '26. So regardless of which pot of money it comes out of, if we want to raise the assessment, it's got to be added somewhere.
So we'll say yes.
So say, so we're back to yes.
We're saying yes. You and I are wrong.
So if you want it, you put yes and if you don't, you put no.
Right. Or when that makes way too much sense the way you said that.
The clarifying question then is, even though there's no, there's no dollars assigned, we're saying it can come out of operating funds, there really is dollars. So maybe we do need dollars back on the, on the chart.
Of how much it will cost?
That's a good point.
Have an understanding.
So, so I was just whispering to Mac, you know, when I see no, it means no, we don't want to do it. So why don't we say, yes, we want it, just as Justin, yes, we want to do it and then we can make sure that we note it as not net new money included in current operating, something like that.
You're just going to provide the context.
But if I may, for some, for me at least, when I look at something, I look at the priority and the associated cost compared to the other priorities that we're looking at. And that's a driving factor for me to vote yea or nay. Wouldn't it be better if it's being done out of the operating dollars that just take it out of this list?
I think we need affirmation that we want to do the project. That's, that's just my thought, unless we want to go back to red, yellow, green.
I don't have a preference, I just want to make it easier for us to just avoid going round and round, is it no, is it yes, is it NA, is it this, is it that? I mean, we're already spending like 10 minutes on this.
I think we can make it very clear in the notes.
With the pain factors, Ted. You'll provide us the context.
Because it's the new money that we're really talking about, right?
Yeah.
So if we can buy wood from our current operating budget, that's something we can do.
I'll just say, anyway, that clarifies what the intent is.
Sure.
However you want to do it, it's fine, but as long as we know what we're doing.
I think we have a decision. We're good, okay?
I have a few.
Can I, can I, can I make sure I maybe expand on this? Can you then write in column U, in highlight or red, which ones you are ready, committed to doing out of the operating expense? Because you note that you will do it so that I actually don't have to think about it and then tell me which ones you're iffy about whether you're actually doing it, because it's not that clean either.
Sure.
Not that clear cut.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Director Faschner?
There are a number of projects here that are duplicative, they're proposing the same thing. We're going to handle those.
I made a note that basically said same as number 27.
Okay.
So I just, I know it was a yes/no process, but there are, you're absolutely right, there are duplicative ones.
And is there a way that you'd like to do this that exists within the binary world of yes, no?
Well, a lot of the duplicates were the swim hours, so for those, I think saw in the memo that we're recommending we wait till September to kind of address those anyway because we'll do like last year and we'll lay out a number of options for additional swim hours and let you vote, so we'll do that later in the process. And the reason we do that later in the process is to see what happens this year in the summer before we, you know, make those decisions. I think mostly other duplicates were related to the kayak storage and, you know, I think staff was recommending we do three more like the one we have now and total cost is like 12K. So I guess, I don't really remember other duplicates, those were the main ones I can recall. And, you know, I guess if you want the kayak stored, I'd just put yes on all of them, but if you put yes and see 27, I think we can follow that as well. But I mean, I think preferably just put yes on all of them would be more clear.
Okay. This just reminds me of a personality test that I've taken before, where duplicate questions and then I answer no, why I answered yes before and then I'm in trouble. All right, thank you. Exactly. Is that right?
So on number two, which is related to the condition assessment, can you help me understand this, so we're going to take about $100,000 this year and then another 50 to 100 in '20, '26. Will that complete the project or is, what is your thoughts on that?
So, right, so I, I believe when Director Mullenix dropped this in for the first time, we maybe didn't, we hadn't confirmed yet we were going to spend another 100,000, right? So we're doing that now. I think when we get to the end of this year and we've got buildings, bridges and pools completed, it's a conversation here to see if we want to go and do some courts, all of our courts, that would sort of be the last item for me. And I think 50 is probably the high end of that conversation. The reason, if I can have just two minutes, I think the reason it would be good to round out the inventory with the same methodology is so that we're looking at the same data for the same facilities, making the same decisions over and over again. So I think, you know, 50 is probably the high end in courts, courts would be the last outlier that I would be truly interested in seeing.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, just one piece, I think it's important, while not germane to the budget discussion right now, but over time, this condition assessment program will run multi-year. I think we're formulating this as a really rich set of data. So beyond this initial tranche and whether it's this vendor or the next vendor, we want to continue this over the course of years. So maybe that's, instead of doing everything that we're doing right now all upfront, we're doing it slowly and across all the.
By statute, we have to do it every five years.
Right, so we're doing the whole thing every year up to the five years and then doing it again.
Then we do it again in five years.
As a program.
Yeah.
That was a long-winded way of saying that.
Yeah, I would think for the long term, not for the budget process, a recommendation, right, on how does the reserve study fit with a condition assessment and how often do we do them and that kind of stuff would be really helpful. Number nine is the RA mobile app. It doesn't have a price.
Doesn't have a price, that's correct. So I don't know if anyone on the board is interested in us developing or engaging with a developer. The reason it's blank is we know that Civic Plus has a mobile application, so we could get our website into a more mobile version that we could push out to the membership and we're just not there with the cost yet, that's, that's why. But we will be ready for next week.
Okay.
And Director Johnson, just to be clear, that is what you're looking for, I believe this was your suggestion.
Exactly. If you can just format the existing website to works well on a mobile base. Happy.
I would definitely advise to look at that. Civic Plus's mobile app has just got awful reviews. Okay, did that one. So could you give us a cost of number 13? I see where you're going, it makes sense, but just for the board to understand, how much does it cost to send our comms materials in paper to the members?
We have plenty of examples of our mailings, that's sure, that's not a problem.
Because I think that the context of that is important from a budgeting perspective, but I agree with where you're going of trying to figure out who, which members would want and which one would not. The 17 is set up tennis court online reservation system. I'm not sure, like, there's no cost there. I've heard in previous budget cycles that we have a system we could use that would cost us extra money, but I'm getting this sense that we're nervous about going down this route from a staff perspective. And so it, I don't know how to vote on this one because we have no cost and I'm not really sure how you guys feel.
So I'll just add some context, so nervous would be a good characterization. I might have said this last year, but I can repeat it too. The tennis culture here is not like a public entity where you would get a permit from your local township to have a court in your own name, we just, it's not something that we do here. So what makes me nervous is that if you're used to walking to your nearby tennis court and walking on and playing tennis and then Mac and I show up with our permit and we wave it around and say, we have this court reserved, that's just not something that we've done in the past. So I, I'm just a little nervous that our membership is going to now go down a different road than we've, than we're used to, where they have this open access and we're not hearing from membership that they don't have time on the court so that they can't get on the courts. I might suggest a pilot, we could try it at one location and see how that goes. But this is, this, this one specifically doesn't speak to a problem that I know exists, unlike Director Farrell's suggestion of trying to figure out who's using the courts and how often and when that is a problem we would like to solve. But from the reservation perspective, I know our staff are, have said to me many times that we just don't know if it will help any issues or actually create more issues.
Director Verne?
So I'm reminded of the, of the multiple conversations when we were going through the torture over Barton Hill where any number of commentators said, well, we can solve this problem, what problem, I don't know, we can solve this problem if we had a reservation system. And I can't count, others could, how many times somebody made that suggestion to us? If, I think we owe the people who, who are making that suggestion an explanation of why not? And that's fine, I mean, if, if, if it's. I mean, if it's the staff view that this is not needed because, but I heard more than a few people saying that they wanted a reservation system. And they, you know, I didn't hear 22,000 people say they wanted a reservation system. I didn't even hear 2,000 people that say they wanted a reservation system. But I did hear a dozen. And I think if we're not going to do it, help me tell them why.
Sure.
I think that's fair because.
I'm sorry, just a second, Director Santa.
Because, I mean, they were quite, they were quite passionate about thinking that all of our problems would be solved if we had a reservation system. I don't think that's true, but I'd like to have something better than, well, the staff doesn't want to do it because it's contrary to our tennis culture. And I'm going, eh, that's not an answer that's going to sell.
Director Santa?
And I believe the comments, and I've heard this before from other folks, is not tennis in particular because we have lots of supply, but it is pickleball courts. And so I guess to Peter's point, do you want to ask Prak, who is, you know, informed, passionate pickleball players, if a reservation system for pickleball is needed? Because I have heard from pickleball players that it would be nice to show up and not have to wait and know when they're going to go play.
I'm happy to have that conversation with Prak. Not a problem.
Director Fleischman?
I believe, I believe the comments that Mr. Farrell was referencing was in reaction in response to pickleball, not tennis.
That's funny.
Okay. If I may. Director Fleischman? Is part of this problem, the fact that there are non-residents who are coming to play on the courts? And that is really the issue?
I've heard it.
I don't know. I'm asking the question.
I've heard complaints from them saying that.
Then that would be solved.
I have heard complaints of non-RA, I've heard complaints of people saying, I've never seen these people, for example, when Barton Hill was open, I've never seen these strangers playing on this court. Granted, Reston's pretty big, but I think that problem is solved, Erwin, if we have a swipe system.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
If that is a problem that we're trying to solve, the swipe system would resolve that.
Yes.
If the reservation system is something that, you know, is not warranted.
And maybe it's a reservation system limited to the pickleball courts. That might be addressing the issue so that it is, it effectively becomes a pilot system if, because what do we got? Autumn Wood? Do we have anything else that's?
Autumn Wood is really the place.
Yeah. So maybe we look at a reservation system for Autumn Wood, for the Autumn Wood pickleball courts, and that becomes less of an issue with the culture of our tennis community.
There kind of is enforcement at Autumn Wood, though. The staff is there on a regular basis.
Right, so Autumn Wood is different than most of our courts in that there is a monitor station there. I'll just also say anecdotally, pickleball players have a sort of built-in reservation system. I'm happy to have this conversation with Prak, and I think that's the best way to do it. But pickleball players, I don't think will be very in favor of having a reservation system. But I'm happy to, why don't we get a plan together? I also just think, if I can have two minutes, this is a bit of a communications conversation too, telling our membership how to go about getting on courts. And maybe we can have a conversation about non-members need to have a reservation to use the courts, even if they have a pass, that's one way to go about it too. So let us not only come back with a cost, but an operational plan for how this might work out. And we'll have that conversation with Prak. I don't believe we'll be able to do that before the 24th. So this may need to carry on into August, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't decide how to vote. And I was like, is it $0? Or could we do a trial and it's $0, but maybe then we'd enhance it and we'd spend money later? But I just, that's, I needed some more answers in order to evaluate.
If I can just add to this. And my concern, Pete, is the adjudication of this. You know, when you go down there waving your permit and then it's like, I'm already here. And how, who, you know, fixes this off? Fixes this problem?
It's trying to avoid a Parks and Recreation episode problem, for sure.
I was going to avoid saying a dance-off, but yeah. Sure.
For number 19, can we, can we have a copy of the trail plan? If we're going to spend more, just, I didn't, I knew we had one when MTAC was around, but I actually didn't realize we still had one.
So a quick update on the trails plan. So Mr. Reynolds, who's sitting back there, has engaged with a vendor who is mapping all of our trails in a new GIS format. Awesome. So once that work is done, I think we have a lot of conversations to be had around what we're doing with trails generally. We're just not quite there yet.
Okay, so we don't have a trails plan.
Does that include condition?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't include condition. We have a trails plan in that we have, so the board funded last year, three years of $50,000 each to do lots of different trails items. The very first item was to map all of the trails because we have trails that are currently on our existing map. So the plan is, it's written down as like, here's the steps, but we can certainly provide that.
But this is not enhancing, which I think is what the quest, what the requested or suggestion is, is to enhance our trail plan. What you're saying we have money for in the budget right now is a maintenance plan plus the map.
Right, and we have money every year to repave some trail. So this, to me, it's, I would like to see the map, then we as staff can prioritize where we think the money should be spent. That, I think that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you.
Not very well.
That helps me, I think, decision.
When we say we're having a trails map, are these just the asphalt trails or is it the natural trails also?
I'm going to look for a head nod. But it's both, right? Yeah, it's both.
Both?
Yes.
Good.
Do you have a close date for when you'll have that?
They're working now, so the early fall, couple months.
And then can I make one more request? Can we take off the 207,000 on all the pools ones, 36, 38, 39, 40, because, and 41? Because we are deferring them till later. 207,000 is what we spent last year.
Right.
So it's not really applicable to 2026's budget because we already made the call to spend it. So I think the, those make more sense to be blank and I'm not going to vote on them. So are we, we're not voting on them, right? Because we're not making that decision till later.
I left mine blank.
Okay. And then one more thing. Is, on number 37, is there an opportunity to potentially fund something like the GMU archive digital version request as a grant? I just keep thinking like libraries scan things and there's got to be grant programs, right? Like that, that's, do you think that that's possible?
I mean, we can look into grant programs. So just as a quick note on GMU, so we went to GMU, saw the library of documents. We asked them if we could scan them all. They said absolutely not. But we could pick the documents, you know, up to a certain amount and they would do that for us. So we can certainly look into grant programs, see what's available.
Okay. That just kind of helps lead me one direction versus the other, if it's even a possibility.
Is this the kind of thing that we could ask Friends of Reston to help us with? It's a big ask. I mean, 25,000K, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, so yes, I'm just thinking the number's going to be big. And it's not a, I don't know that it would make sense compared to the things Friends usually funds, given their current funding stream.
Okay.
Let's take a look at it. We're still trying to see how much of that, I mean, our understanding, I haven't personally been there, but the documents are in complete disarray and there's handwritten notes from 1975 and all sorts of things in these infamous files. It's not as if we're going to the laser fiche and it's all exactly what you're looking for.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I figured this was like a research project. This wasn't, you know, just send somebody down and throw something in the scanner. It's not cheap. Sir?
I was confused by something that Mr. Lust said. Is GMU saying they won't let us scan them? Or are they saying they won't scan?
Yeah, so they do this, as far as I understand this, they do the scanning. They wouldn't do it all, they just wouldn't take that task on. I could ask them if we could do it? That's not a question we ask them.
Because in the, in similar circumstances, we've made arrangements in other archives for an archivist to go in and do the scanning in their facility.
Right.
Right? So that we're not tying up their staff. And I can understand they don't want their staff tied up. But it strikes me that there are companies, archivist companies, that would go in and do the scanning for us. Yeah, we probably want to limit the amount of scanning that gets done so that it's really focused on the land use cases and that kind of history of how we got to where we are with land use cases. So I'm happy to have, you know, a further conversation about what we're really looking at.
Sure.
But I don't, I don't want us to turn our back on the need for this archive because GMU doesn't want to do it. I get them not wanting to do it, but there are companies that will do it if we can get into some kind of cooperative arrangement with GMU.
We will ask that question.
My, when I ask this, my vision was that Iron Mountain would come out and do it for us. You know, not that GMU would do it at all.
Sure.
So if we can do what Director Farrell's saying and see if there's a vendor.
Happy to.
Thank you. Anything else?
For number 37, which is the Lake Thoreau Trail crossing, I just, as you guys consider or evaluate that one, I would just ask that you also consider that we have Barton Hill Crossing. And as a board, I feel like we should start.
Forty-two.
Oh, is it forty-two? Sorry. The last one. The last one. The last one. As a board, I think that we either need a philosophy or we need to start thinking about treating the projects similarly as they come in and not treating them different because they're essentially, it's essentially the same project as Barton Hill. It's just.
I completely agree with you.
And it shouldn't be like a favoritism type of situation.
Completely agree with you. And in fact, a few, couple months ago when this issue came up, I made the comment, if you guys recalled, that let's just not limit it to that one place because we've got other areas. And it's the same problem. So I think we should be looking at all of them, just to reaffirm what you're saying.
Okay. I want to make one observation. And that is, there may not be all the same problem because some may be, the vision of the ongoing traffic is limited by vegetation.
Agreed.
And in other places, that's not the case. Maybe you need a different, a speed bump or some other thing. They're not, one size does not fit all.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's not evaluating the problem and how to fix it, I think is one thing. But as RA, are we going, are we okay taking on the fix? Or is it something we're advocating the county to do? Or are we okay doing the research behind whether something needs to be done, but after that it moves to a request to the county? Like, I feel like we need a philosophy.
The goal is the same across all of them.
Or, Mr. President, we could ask one of the rezoning applicants to proffer it.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Right. Like I said, philosophy.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? All right, thank you very much. Next, we've got the elections and referendum resolution conversation. And we've got some folks on the line waiting for that one. Who's going to drive that?
We have the vice chair of the Elections Committee, Katie Boswell, on Zoom, and she will be taking lead on this.
Wonderful. Good evening, Katie.
Nice to be with you. So on this agenda item, this has been something that's been going back and forth for almost a year. As you can see in your notes, the summary that you had provides where we are now with the election committee's process for improving the efforts and proposed changes for the RA governing documents. I'm going to be short and sweet about this. So at the May 15th Elections Committee meeting, we had taken the board's notes from many months ago and we made the following edits to the documents. We did red lines that you'll see in your packet. There are four specific ones that we did. The resolution changes were that we did a, the committee approved a red line change to Resolution 2 and 4 regarding candidate filing, campaign rules, and voting procedures. The second one is we added some language for an appeals process for candidates denied certification. The third one is a strengthened residency verification requirement in candidacy forms so that we can make sure that we are dealing with that issue that's come up. And then the fourth is clarified voting instructions for electronic and paper ballots and this, making sure that, you know, we are doing the right thing on that. So specifically for the first one, Resolution 2, we added a line in that section of filing for candidacy that we needed a statement attesting to the residency with a picture ID. We're just asking for folks to make sure that they have that and provide it to us. The second one specifically in Resolution 2, we added an appeals process for candidate eligibility. We know that that's going to mess a little bit with our timeline for the elections, but we thought that that was really important in there. Specifically for the third one, it's Resolution 4, we added corresponding address to number eight voting codes. And then the fourth one is in Resolution 4 where we added simple language to number 93C3 about adding voting instructions for both electronic and paper ballots, just so that we're clear in our resolution on those. So more than happy to take questions. I see that someone's already.
Director Fleischman?
Can I have a?
I hear you, Director Santa. You'll be after Director Fleischman. Okay.
Okay.
Do I go? You go first. Okay. In your election statement of candidacy and in your petition of candidacy, you have the applicant swear and affirm. Is there any reason to have both? And why not just affirm?
It's an answer. Does he want the answer?
Yeah. Let's see, well, let's see what their responses. Katie, did you have a response for that?
Uh, no, I mean, we just use language that's been used in the past with other folks, that's why. Is there, is, would you rather us, I mean, I hear you that you want us to.
I know.
That's not what I'm hearing? You want us to not swear, but affirm?
John? So in the development of English common law, we use both the Anglo-Saxon term and the New French term. So swear comes from, from the Latin and affirm comes from the other. So you'll see that in a lot of legal documents, that we have two, two words that mean the same thing, but they have been paired together forever. And lawyers being afraid of making a mistake, keep putting those two words in all the time. Swear and affirm is one example. There are thousands of examples.
I understand, but this is, one, this is not under oath, is it?
Swear is.
Is it?
Swear would, if I swear to something and I lie, that's perjury.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. Tony? But if you affirm, same thing.
Not, well, yeah.
In other words, there are people who will not swear to things. They will affirm. Okay, I'm going to let the parliamentarians speak. Please, sir.
So, didn't know that, John, but the reason I put it in there is for, because you are swearing. You're not swearing under oath, but you are making a statement that could be construed as at least a prima facie of perjury if you're not doing it. It's stronger. These people are signing up to be corporate fiduciaries. And yeah, John hit it on the head. I'm a lawyer and those are the words I like.
What, what do you do with people who don't swear?
Erwin, if they're not going to, if they're going to balk at swearing and affirming that they're resident.
I'm not saying not affirm. I can say not affirm.
Okay. If they're going to balk at any part of the resolution that this board has adopted, I have concerns about why they would do so.
Whereas if you, if you're asked to swear under oath and you put your hand on a Bible or whatever, have some people just, no, I don't do that.
We're not bringing God into this.
I'll affirm.
How hypothetical are we getting right now?
I'm affirming, I'm very.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
I'm concerned that there are people who will not swear.
The purpose, the way I understood it from the Elections Committee, from this board, is we wanted a strong statement that we were only having residents apply to be on the Board of Directors. We wanted a safeguard as much as we could without being, without overly chilling volunteers to serve on the board. This, I think, is, we could very well be within our rights to ask you to swear under oath in front of a notary. That, I think, is overboard. I think this is a good middle road.
Director Santa, you were going to say something?
Uh, yes. Resolution Two, page three, item three, that candidacy should not be altered once the Elections Committee has certified the statement. Does that mean that if there's an error that was committed by the Elections Committee that edits, the candidate's statement won't be revisited?
No. In fact, we had this this last time where a candidate's statement was one word over and we. And so, you know, the candidate asked for us to go back, and in the resolution, it clearly states that we can't reword or do anything with that statement once it's been put forth.
Okay. The next one, in the event that the Elections Committee denies certification to a candidate, the candidate shall have one business day to file an appeal with the Elections Committee. Do we need to define by how we notify the candidates that they have made it? Like, unless somebody's present for that meeting, you're not there. Is there, should there be, should that process be documented here, is my question?
I think that we can easily document in our, you know, we're going through our, what are we calling those? The, you know, how we do everything in the elections, we can document it there. I don't think we have to put it inside the resolution. But if the lawyer in the room would like us, you know, thinks that we need to put it in the resolution, we can also add that language too. But we are going through a process of making sure that, you know, we have documented how we run elections inside of Reston so that if, you know, a bus hits us and we have to have a whole new committee, they have a way of knowing how to run the election.
Any other questions?
Just tell you want to respond?
Just want to point quick one. Was there a reason you didn't want to use 24 hours instead of one business day?
Well, I think what we were looking at is we didn't know how late our, like, our meetings can go, considering some of our meetings go, can go late. And so we just wanted one single business day and not have it drag on into another day. We're looking at a really tight election schedule that there's not a ton of wiggle room, to be honest.
No, I appreciate that. I think it would be useful, helpful to clarify what that one business day is, in my opinion. People might have, people might have different views of what a business day, is it eight to five? Is it nine to five? Is it seven thirty to five thirty, something like that? That's where I'm coming from.
Mr. Champ?
I think it makes sense to.
I wasn't done with my question. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Director Santa. Didn't mean to cut.
Mr. Champ is about to answer both of you.
I think it makes sense to use one business day and go off the business hours of RA.
Just clarify it.
You want like perens?
No, no, no. I would say. People have different views of what, they wouldn't even know what the RA hours are.
Well, technically, a business day is.
Nine to five.
A day, nine to five from Monday through Friday. So if it's.
It's a common understanding.
I'm sorry?
That's the common understanding.
Yeah. So if it, the purpose really is, if you say 24 hours and it's on a Friday, is someone coming in on Saturday to deal with it?
I don't know.
It's going to be very lonely.
Yeah, I don't want to kill this debate.
Director Santa has one question. Indeed. Director Santa?
My question was, for DRB appeals, don't we say they have till, since this came up recently, we said we had till 11:59 PM to make a decision on our appeal?
Cam is telling me yes.
So I only bring that up to just showcase that for DRB, we say 11:59 PM, but for this, we're saying 5:00 PM. I just want this body to know the difference. My other question?
Can, Cam is coming to the podium, I believe, to remove the ambiguity.
So it doesn't say 11:59 PM. What it says is that day. It says a day. And so we've had this conversation before in terms of what does that actually mean? And we understood that some members may think that it's not 5 o'clock, it's not 5:30, it's not 6 o'clock. So we go all the way to the end of the day. So as long as they submit it before midnight that day, we will accept it.
Which is contrasted from what we say, which is business day. Different committees run them, I mean, is it a conversation in the future of, do we want all deadlines to be business days? Do we want all, you know, that's something that the board may elect to take up, but unless this board wants to give the committee guidance that they want to extend it to that point, generally, the committees govern themselves and the Elections Committee creates its resolutions for board approval.
I'm just highlighting the discrepancy. If folks want to debate it, we can. My follow-on question to that one is, when we notify the candidate of why, of their certification, are we explaining in written form why we're denying it? Does the candidate know what to appeal?
Katie, is that, I believe that's a question for you. Do candidates know what they should be appealing? Are they provided with an explanation of why their application has been denied?
Wait, was that to me?
Yes.
Yes.
They do. They get, they get an explanation?
I mean, if, so let me just be, yes, if they're in the room, we will tell them. And if they're not in the room, then we will give them a written explanation.
Director Santa, does that satisfy your question?
I think they should get a written explanation no ma, no matter what, whether they're in the room or just so that we have it documented.
That's fair. We can do that.
And then, for, remind me, for all of these decisions that we're making here for the candidacy, they're all in the open. They're not in executive session, correct?
Correct. Actually, we do, in this last year, we did go in executive session just to discuss, but then we came out of executive discussion and then we let them know what we discussed. Like, it wasn't, we just wanted a place to be able to say stupid stuff without folks hearing us, and then we could then, in a coherent way, tell them, you know, what we had discussed.
Yeah, and Tony, I think we may want to clarify the definition of stupid stuff.
Go ahead, sure.
Generally involves a lawyer.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I, can I take the personal offense to having lawyers associated with stupid stuff?
I think they don't know enough lawyers, John.
Katie, we just didn't want anybody getting in trouble about executive session, that's all.
Mr. President.
And, who's, who's.
Director Santa Dunn, I don't want to cut her off.
Uh, no, I would say I'm in favor of the changes as long as you address the written format of the candidate will receive an explanation why it was denied. Okay. And for the rest of my observations, I just want to make sure the board has them noted.
Thank you, Representative.
Is there any concern to how, is it by letter or email? Would that suffice as a written?
I don't think.
I mean, if you're making it one business day, a letter's never going to make it to anybody, so it has to be email.
It would be personal delivery.
Is Santa finished?
I think she is.
Director San.
She said she was.
Okay. Did you have something? Did Director Fleishman have something? I have two things.
Yeah, I was going to comment that it doesn't have to be email. It could be personal delivery if the person is there at the time of the hearing when they make that decision. It was just candidacy.
Right. Please. I'm concerned, because I had to deal with this two years, a year ago, two years ago, we're only giving the candidate a right of appeal. And I was faced with a situation a couple of years ago where members suggested that a candidate wasn't qualified. And I advised them to file with the Elections Committee to bring their concerns to the attention of the Elections Committee. And the concern I had at the time was that if the Elections Committee took the time that they were allowed to take, that our ballots could be printed with a candidate on the ballot who wasn't qualified. And I'm looking at this resolution, and if that situation happens again, what are we doing? Because I don't see it addressed here.
So I, so I was not around during your thing, but I think that was a residency issue? Is that not right?
Well, I'm saying it could be a residency issue, and you've addressed that, and I want to come back to that. But I'm saying that there was some other problem with the candidate's petition or something like that. And a member says, this person's not qualified to be on the ballot, and we've got a very short period of time that we've given ourselves to get the candidate's name, address, and candidate's statement over to the printer. And it's like, okay, wait a minute. How do we deal with, because the last thing we want to do is have a candidate on the ballot who isn't qualified, right? And it may be that there's something that comes to the attention of a member who wants to bring that issue to the Elections Committee. And as I read this, it's like, too late. We've made the decision, and now we have somebody elected to the board who doesn't qualify to be on the board. And yes, in that case, it was residency, but I'm really focused on if, if members became aware that a candidate didn't meet the qualifications, residency is one issue, but there could be others, how, what do we do? I don't see that, I don't see that circumstance addressed here at all. And it would be embarrassing, I think, to the association to have a candidate on a ballot who we know is not qualified or have, who we have reason to believe is not qualified. And I'm fully aware of the short timeframe to get the ballot out to the printer and get it out in the mail. But if, if members of the association became aware of a disqualifying fact, there's nothing here. It's, we're just kind of go, well, tough luck, it's on the ballot and could get voted on the board. What do we do then?
Katie, that question, I was just saying that question is for you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't. I guess I'm, I think, I'm trying to figure out how we solve for a problem that's not there at this moment, right? And, and we've been going back and forth and trying to figure it out. I'm not certain, so, so members, I'm trying to go through the whole process, right? So members know when folks are running for office. We have an open forum for members to be able to hear from folks. That is at a, at a point where the member can bring up any issues that they have that they believe that disqualifies that candidate.
Ballot's up.
It's too late. They're already on the ballot.
You've certified the candidates by that time.
So are you saying that you believe that there's not also, in a way, because we have to hit a quorum for people to be able to be elected? If members decide that someone is not qualified, isn't the next step to not vote for the candidate?
If I may, I believe the issue of qualification here is, is about residency. So it wouldn't really be up to the members to identify whether or not a person's qualified. Like, it wouldn't be something that's subjective. Like, this would be the kind of thing where we would determine that, you know, Bob X lives at a particular place.
We have, Ms. Copeland wants to be heard and Mr. Fleishman wants to be heard.
I may see that.
If I may, I was just going to clarify what Director Farrell is asking, which is, prior to a candidate being, or if a candidate is certified, there, the, there's not an appeals process in place for a member to appeal to the Elections Committee about that certification if there is a concern with whether or not, let's, since we've been talking about residency, let's say residency, there's not an appeals process that is addressed in this resolution for a member of Reston Association to appeal a decision by the committee of a certified candidate. However, what the committee is putting forth is more in favor of the candidate having a window to appeal a decision to deny them candidacy or to deny them certification. And so he's asking, what, what would, what would that look like for a member? And is that something that the Elections Committee is going to consider putting forth? Is that correct?
You have it.
I'm sorry, we'll give her a chance to answer, then you can jump in there, Director Fleishman.
Yeah, we can take that back to the committee. I think at this point, it's July, we could see if we could have new language, but I just also want to make sure that we have a timeline that works for the elections that are coming up in this next year.
Director Fleishman?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm not sure that this is a real possibility of occurrence for the following reasons. When you referenced the question of residency being raised a couple of years ago, there was no provision, which there is now, to give the committee a basis for making a judgment about residency. And these are documentation that should be pretty well accepted without much question. And so the likelihood that someone else is going to come forward and say, he's not really a resident, is small. And all of the other things that they check are based on documentation that will be before them. They have a petition of candidacy, which has a minimum of 25 signatures from independent units, and they check, does that person actually live there? Is that the signature of that person? Okay, fine. And we recommend that they do more than 25 signatures. So the committee is going to be in a position to make a judgment about that basis. What other basis is there for making a question, making a judgment about the qualification of the candidacy? That is not up to the voters.
We need to extend the time of the meeting.
So for me, I don't, I think that's a sort of unlikely thing to occur.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, I'm going to pause this and ask that we take a motion to extend, and I'd like to see if we can do until 10:45.
Move to extend the meeting to end at 10:45.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any comments, question comments? 10:45. Calling question? Oh, you had a comment. I'm sorry, that's my 10 o'clock alarm.
Go for it.
Okay.
We need to vote.
Call in. Call in, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is Director Landis still on? If not, it's unanimous of all intended. 7:01. Okay. Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
That's, I.
Thank you, sir. Director Dresser?
I also had the exact same issue on my list. And I would suggest that, in lieu of going back to the Elections Committee, that we put a similar sentence that we give the candidates in for the members. Something like, the member shall have one business day following the posting of the candidate filings to the RA website under V of that one. It would be V1, I guess you could make it. And I'll give you another example. There's definitely been talk in the past about people fraudulently getting people's signatures and therefore not having 25 signatures. And I feel like there is a process in the public forum for when someone, when a candidate files their petition to be on a ballot, you know, with their signatures, that there's a public process that is allowed on, you know, elections outside of us. And I kind of question, like, why would we not have one for them?
Like a process?
A process by which they could say, I'm not sure that that's real, or I'm not sure that that's right. And have the Election Committee take it up. And in this case, we hope, right, all the steps that they have in place to certify these candidates are followed and accurate. But, you know, what if something happens and they're not? You know, to give the members a chance to say, I think you need to research this because this, I think, is inaccurate, or you were not aware at the time, but this is inaccurate. I think that process, if the candidate gets it, I think that the member should get it.
May I?
I think if we're going to go down this rabbit hole, then the onus, I don't want to create witch hunts for candidates who a small number, a small number of people just dislike. It just create a big unnecessary nuisance. I would say if you would like to do that, then the member who wants to challenge the candidacy needs to bring forward, not a claim, but also some type of evidence that makes it worthy of the committee's time to go down this closer examination of the candidate's application. Because otherwise, we could see a place where we could say just about anything to challenge anybody's candidate certification process.
Director Fleishman?
Then the candidate itself, then the candidate itself has to not be a delinquent, it's my understanding. So be in good standing, meaning you pay your dues. Obviously, this candidate, a candidate can't have, you know, some type of adjudication where Tony has had to send him a letter to say, please don't do this. So I feel like there is a process that is pretty self-spoken for. So if we feel strongly about this, just know that I would only favor it if the person challenging this has to have evidence brought forward.
Director Fleishman?
Otherwise, I don't think this is necessary.
Director Santo, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Director Fleishman?
I don't know whether a similar process for public challenge to the qualification of a candidate after the candidate has been certified as a candidate in Fairfax County exists. And what that process is, and what kind of evidence is required, and within what time does it have to be filed? And what time does the commission, the Electorin Commission, have to resolve the issue? But we may take, should perhaps consider that and see what, how that works.
There is such a provision in law, and it happens, that people go to the Electoral Board, the State Board of Elections, or to the local Board of Elections and say.
Speak up, please.
I'm sorry, there are provisions in state code, one of my other activities, for a candidate's petition to be challenged as not having sufficient signatures or that has signatures of people who don't live in the district. So as an example, one of the things that could happen here is a candidate from Lake Anne, for the Lake Anne District, gets signatures from people in South Lakes. And my understanding of how it works is, you know, we look to see whether or not the address is in the relevant district, okay? We don't do any kind of verification of, did you actually sign this? We don't do that. But somebody claims that I signed a petition for the South Lakes District person. I didn't. That person didn't get 25 signatures, right? So that's Director Just Jack's example. And there is a model that you could use. It's longer than I think we want to use for there to be a challenge to petitions. But there is a model that we could look to in state code for challenging petitions of candidates.
The problem is that no one is going to see the petitions of candidacy except the committee. Who else is going to see them? Because they are filed with the committee, they are not disclosed, they're not made public, and they are simply delivered to the committee. Because no one is, no one knows who the candidates are until after the committee has reviewed their petitions.
That's fine.
And made a determination.
But once the determination is made, that should be, that should be available to any member to look at.
And I call when it's not.
The timing is very limited. Once the filing date has come, the next day, the very next day, the committee meets to review those applications and make a determination.
Right.
So where is the public going to see them?
They see them on the RA website, because I call when they're not available. Every single year, after the Elections Committee meets, I make sure that they're posted on the RA website so that they can be reviewed. Because we have, this is already a ballot, this is already in a resolution that says candidate filings shall not be made public by the Association until the Election Committee has completed its certification. I had a conversation with Tony this past year about it. That's why I'm saying, if we are offering that appeal process and that one business day to the person, the candidate, then what would be the harm in adding it for a member to also have this window, the same window of appeal? And so that, and I'm fine with adding something to the effect of what Director Santo is saying. But what my suggestion was is, the member shall have one business day following the posting of the candidate filings to the RA website to bring, I don't know, evidence of inaccurate certification? I mean, that, I just came up with that on the fly, but that's what I think that, yes.
I don't want to cut you off.
Nope, that's what I came up with. But that's why, I mean, I had a conversation with Tony about this thing. And the resolution says they will not be made public until after.
After certification.
Right. And so my concern has always been, well, where's the public then? Where are they going? Are we not meeting a resolution if we don't post these? And we had the conversation of, if you request them as a member, then he would have to turn them over to you.
All right, I'm going to interrupt here and ask if there is a specific action we're looking for.
I will make a motion to amend, what is this resolution? Amend Elections and Referendum Resolution to Candidate Filing Procedures and Orientation. Item A V1, is that right? No, 8, no, B. It's B. B2V and add a sub 1 with the language of, the member shall have one business day following the posting of the candidate filings to the RA website to bring evidence of inaccurate certification.
All right, there is a motion.
Inaccurate certification when it hasn't been certified?
No, this is after the certification takes place. We already have one that says candidate filings shall not be made public by the Association until the Elections Committee has completed its certification process.
So when is a candidate actually certified?
I'm sorry, the motion has been made, if I'm going to have to second and then go to comments.
Yeah, then we can discuss.
And now it's been seconded. Comments?
So when is a candidate actually certified? If you're saying that there's a one-day wait for some member to come in and say, ah, and then there has to be an adjudication of that, which is another day. So the certification is, its effectiveness is delayed for two days.
Right. It's also delayed for two, it's actually delayed for more than two days because if somebody appeals the election, which is my second question for tonight, the Elections Committee has to give two business day notice in order to have a meeting. So it's delayed for three business days.
It's at least three days.
So what I'm saying, though, is if we are offering that in this, in the resolution that the Elections Committee gave us, they are offering the candidates one business day after the certification process. Why would we not offer the members the same? We're already in this three-day window.
Okay. You're now at the, I'm going to count, this is your second bite of the apple. Feel free.
But then, in one case, the certificate, where the candidate is involved, which is the provision that we have here now, his certification has been denied. So he's appealing. But the other one is an attempt to deny the certification that has already been granted. So when is the certification effective? Isn't the certification effective as of the date it's given? Not necessarily, huh?
Subject to appeal.
Well, then you're going to have to set the timing. I would suggest that we ask the committee to come back and with these matters in mind and come back to us with a rewriting.
So we've got a motion already on the table. Are we going to ask Director Dresser to amend her motion? Or are we going to do a second motion after this is, just a sec? I have a, well, Director Farrell?
So I had a different question regarding this. Before we send it back, if someone wants to mark a motion to send it back, I'm not going to oppose it.
I do too.
Excuse me?
I do too.
Right.
But right now, we're in the middle of this motion.
I understand.
Is this going to be germane to this motion?
No.
Okay. So we're going to finish this motion, and then we'll go to the next one.
Okay. Okay. I would like a substitute motion to send this back to the committee. I move to substitute the motion with a motion to.
It's not a substitute motion.
What is it?
No, we're not going to go back and forth. We've got a parliamentarian. Tony?
I'm in.
It's a motion to refer.
Tony, you'll answer.
It's a motion to refer. John is correct.
Okay.
Fine. I make a motion to refer this matter to the committee for further work on the matter and come back to us with a rewritten resolution.
Okay. So is there a second for this motion?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Comments?
I'll speak to the motion then.
Director Farrell?
So we're sending this resolution back to the committee, and I'm fine with that, given the issue. But there's another issue I want them to consider. And that's on page 2 of Resolution 2 and the paragraph A2, Romanant 2, where we say, and I had to think, I had to scratch my head and think, what the hell are they looking for? Statement attesting your residency with a photo ID that includes RA property address. And I had to think about this. What am I doing? What do I have to, because you and I have to do this this January. Somebody has to do it this January. For certain, I have to do it this January because I am running for reelection. And I'm saying, so what works? And it seems to me that the least we can do for the candidate is say, what satisfies this? And so are we talking driver's license, passport? What do we got? And it doesn't hurt for us to say EG, meaning example, driver's license or passport. Or maybe something else.
Or any government-issued ID.
Not every government-issued ID has your address on it.
No, that's what I'm saying, any government-issued ID that has your RA address on it.
Or it could be something else. But they want a photograph and an address. And what I'm saying is, it doesn't, EG is example. It's not all-inclusive. But to be able to tell, I mean, we have a hard enough time getting candidates to run, as last year was an example. Can we make it easier for them to understand what they need? Your driver's license works, your passport works, or other.
Mortgage statements.
Well, it doesn't have your photograph on it.
A, yeah, but you can submit a photographic evidence.
No, this says a photo ID. This is a photo ID. Mr. President, all I want is for them to look at that and make it clear what satisfies this requirement. Because they want a photo ID and they want a resident's address. I'm good with that. But, and I don't want them to give me an exhaustive list, but clearly the driver's license works, clearly the passport works. I don't know if there's some other photo ID that has your resident's address on it, and I'm not going to solve that tonight.
So is this a, is this an addendum to sending it back? Or is this a list of things that we'll give them post the motion that we'd like to review?
If my chairman is here, I got to believe that they heard what I just said. And they can, and they can give that consideration when they reconsider this resolution.
I'm thinking, though, that we should probably put together something after the motion that outlines exactly what our requests are, so it makes it easier for the committee. Okay.
I have.
Oh, we have more comments on the motion?
No, 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 just a clarification.
Yes.
Are we, this latest motion, we've gone around so many times, I don't even know if it's midnight or day or night. Are we talking about that specific item? Are we talking about all the red lines?
All of it.
Oh, we're talking about sending the document back?
For them to reconsider.
The motion, as I understand it from, Mr. President, the motion, as I understand it from Director Fleishman, is to send Resolution 2 back to the committee and asking them to revisit specifically that item about appeals. And I'm asking that they also look at something else.
That's the motion. Okay.
What about the rest of the red lines?
The rest of that are all the things I said that we would put together in the list post the motion. So we can make it, make our request more clear to the Election Committee. So, any further comments?
I have my second. I have two things. So my second one is, from an election committee standpoint, are these the only resolutions that you plan to send back to us?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Based on your feedback that you want to table all the rest of them. So we took your feedback, and we took the four that we thought we could do and did them.
Okay, perfect. So then I have, my question then is to counsel. I was referring to, they have to wait two business days to have a meeting. And that's in, I don't know if it's in the election resolutions or the committee resolutions, but it's somewhere in there. Is that two business days something that we came up with at RA as part of our resolutions? Is that a Virginia law? Is that?
I believe, I'm unsure if the committee put down two business days. I don't have the document in front of me. In our bylaws, it says two days, and I treated that as 48 hours. So, you know, in case the board wants to call a special meeting on a Saturday, don't call a special meeting on Saturday. But it could happen. There could be a cash topic issue that requires.
We used to have budget meetings on Saturdays all the time.
That sounds just like a, that's not funny. So I'm not sure if.
So we can't change it? Is that what you're saying?
You can't change the two days, no.
Unless we change the bylaws.
At a minimum, and I'd have to double-check, but I believe it's in POA as well.
Okay. I'm just, I'm really looking for a solution in which the Elections Committee, during the election cycle, can address issues in less than two days. Like, they have the ability to say, this is an urgent matter. We need to meet. Because right now, their only option is to join a unanimous consent motion. But if there isn't, then I'm not going to ask to refer it back to the committee. No. No.
I don't think there is.
Okay, then I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can I ask it to the Elections Committee? Can I ask a question to her?
You can ask it to whomever you want to.
I just want to make sure it was recognized because I'm not in the room, I can't read body language.
Don't worry, we're all tense and angry.
Because it's almost 10:30. So, my question is, you made a statement earlier, which is, I don't understand what problem we're trying to solve. So, I just want to understand, by sending this back to you and given just your reaction to the comment that prompted that, does that mean that there could be a possibility where the Elections Committee says, we actually don't think we need a member's appeal?
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand where this is headed. Because if that, if that's sort of already the consensus that the Elections Committee has, then we're going to be talking about this in a couple of months, and we're back to square one. So, I just want to understand how you see this situation.
I mean, I can't speak for the whole committee. I think what we came up with as a committee is what we agree that we could do for now. We can talk about it again. I think the reality of your question is that if this is something that is wanted prior to the next election, it may be really difficult considering the back and forth between the Elections Committee and the board.
Okay. My follow-up question is, have there been, you may not have the answer to this, so I guess my question is, please follow up with, in response to Brittany who sent to us, which is, have there been instances in previous signature discrepancies where the committee, at some point after the fact that it was certified, a member said, you know, I really wish I had a chance to challenge that? Has there ever been a case of that occurred?
So, I don't know if that has ever happened. And of the occurrences that have happened where people have had issues with candidates, we have solved for those issues in what we have brought to you. I can go back and check with folks that have been on the committee much longer than me or even Brittany, and we can, you know, come back with an answer to you. But my initial gut reaction is no, because we would have talked about it in the committee as we were coming through with these.
And then, when you're doing the due diligence of verifying the signatures, there was a comment made that was, well, maybe that person didn't sign the signature. In normal election certification practices generally, do election committees go validate signatures? Because I thought it was my understanding that if the candidate is swearing and affirming, then the onus is on that person to prove that that said person signed the signature. It's not on the committee to go on a witch hunt to figure out who, if this person really signed the signature, is that correct?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My experience, to address the question that Director Santa asked, it's my observation and experience that the committee basically doesn't review the signatures. That's the process that's done by staff. I don't know that that's fair to the staff for the committee to review, to rely on staff. But my observation of being more, at being, at more than one certification meeting is the committee doesn't look at anything. Committee basically asks the staff to advise them as to whether or not the signatures are right and those kind of things. Occasionally, once in a while, I've been at meetings where they have circulated the petitions among the committee members. But it's how those petitions are reviewed, I don't think there's a standard operating procedure for how those are reviewed. And I can be corrected, but my observation of actually being there at certification meetings is, some years, the committee looks at the signature on the petitions, and some years, they don't.
May I ask you a question too, John Travis?
Director Santa, I think you've, you've taken a couple of those apple bites, I think we're good to go here.
I have, I- Actually, I had, I, I think that's unfair because previously, we have one board member who has gone and asked several things about other items on a list, and they got their bite of the apple because they were concise.
Not in the context of a motion. The reason, the, we've gone to the motion now so we can tighten it up. But Ms. Boswell, as our guest, please, you were going to say something?
I just, I, I think it's unfair to have a board member accuse a committee that's doing the business of the elections and saying that we're not actually doing our job. I mean, granted, I've been on the committee now for only one election cycle, but we didn't just pass anything around and we didn't just rubber stamp something.
I appreciate that, we're going to leave that at that, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your feedback, and we're not going to continue that in the room anymore. Thank you. Please.
Really quick, just a minute. Yes, staff does go through and validate and verify the signatures prior to them coming to the committee, just because it is a bit of an arduous process and our, the information is housed in our systems that the Election Committee doesn't have direct access to. So, a lot of it is referencing not only Fairfax County's records, our information that is in RegTrac, and our information that's in Member Suite, but it's also on occasion when we can't verify a signature because it's not, you know, legible, calling them and, or trying to find some way to verify, okay, this is this address, this is where I can find their information, and saying, hey, I've got this information, can you verify that you're the person that signed it? And that does happen. So, I can't verify forward things that happened in the past, but since I've been working with this Elections Committee and since I've been here at Reston, we have gone through to try to verify as many signatures as possible, and we're only accepting those that we can verify as the count of that 25. And so, and that information has been given to the Elections Committee and they do review it. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
And that will be the last word on that. Thank you very much, Brittany, and thank you, Ms. Boswell, for your volunteer activities. We appreciate it. Everyone else, there is a vote. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Director Santa and Director Lanza, are you online?
Yep.
Okay, that is, I'm taking that as a no from you or you're abstaining?
I mean, did you, did you count the yays yet? Because usually go yay, go or the no's, so I don't know where we are in the vote process.
Yes, we did, we did. Can we just raise the hands again, please? One, two, three.
We counted yes.
I'm a no.
We've got six, yay. And nos?
No.
We've got one no, and then abstain. And one abstain. So, there we go, 611. No, it's 511, excuse me.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
No, I did not hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was abstaining.
So, it's 512. The motion carries. It's going to be returned to the committee.
Close his motion as well as her motion, since it was being referred?
It's, her motion is being referred to the committee.
Okay, so they're both?
Yes.
Do you need a motion about the ID?
No, we're putting together a list of things to help you with that. Wonderful. Yes. Director Dreschek?
Oh, can we move on?
Yes, that's, that is my goal.
But I've motioned to, for the board to enter executive session on contractual matters, personnel matters, and consultation with counsel.
Before we, I'm sorry.
Oh, did I miss one?
No, it's just that it's 10:30.
Want to do a motion before we go in? And I will motion-
We had more than one resolution from the Elections Committee.
Oh, you want to do that first? I was going to do them when they both came back.
Do we have, on Resolution Four, does anybody have a problem with Resolution Four? Has the Elections Committee sent that to us also?
So, I will-
I know.
I will move to approve the edits to Election and Referendum Resolution Four, Member Voting Rights Form of Ballots, ballot tabulation, and reporting procedures for board elections.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Comments or questions?
Can I speak to the motion?
Go ahead.
This is the motion, I believe, that has all the forms in it, right? No, that was the last one, then I'm done.
So, just to be clear, I, it, my prior comment related to my observation of prior Election Committee conduct of certification, not this year's most recent exercise. So, it just, that's what I see, which is what I saw. And so, there was no, no criticism of the current committee was intended, nor any criticism of Ms. Copeland was intended. I just was reporting what I saw with my own eyes. So, I support Resolution Number Four.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven. Director Lanza?
Aye.
That's unanimous of all in attendance.
I'll motion to extend the meeting until 11:30. An hour. Is that fair?
No.
No.
Well, I think he just seconded it, sorry.
So, you're going to have to vote it down or if you don't like it. All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three. That's three, four, well, three in favor. Against? One, two.
No.
Three, four, against, and one abstaining.
How did Mr. Lanza vote?
He said aye, but I think he was saying-
He was saying, he was saying against.
Okay.
So, can we do all?
One of the nays can throw out a motion, I don't know what else to do. When do you guys want to stay till?
Move to extend the meeting.
Well, we have till 10:45, so.
Move to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, comments?
This is motion to extend to 11.
Yep. All right, all in favor? Five, six, okay. That's six in favor, against?
No.
That's one against, and abstaining. Director Lanza, where you at?
I'm for the 11 o'clock extension.
Okay, so that's seven to one.
Okay. So, move to enter executive session on contractual matters, personnel matters, and consultation with legal counsel.
May, motion's been made, is it seconded?
Second.
Made and seconded, comments? Let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
That's seven in favor, that's unanimous. All right, executive session. Executive session.
All right, thanks. We are back from executive session. I think we've got some motion.
All right, unanimous consent to extend the meeting to end at 11:15.
Second.
unanimous consent. We don't need any objection. We just need to look for objections. I see no objections. Let's go.
All right, move that the Reston Association Board of Director certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a contractual nature involving personnel matters or involving consultation with counsel were discussed during or considered by the board during executive session.
Second.
Motion is made in second and all in favor.
Aye.
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 That is unanimous. Director Lanza?
He is.
He's on.
He's unmuted too.
Now he's muted.
Now he's muted.
Now he's muted.
Seven in favor, by the way.
Oh, he's back.
Director Lanza, where do you stand?
Aye.
It's unanimous of all intenants.
Move to approve Karen Anton for the position of vice chair to the covenants committee.
Second.
Motion is made in second.
Mr. President, I'm not able to support this nomination.
I haven't taken any else for comments yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, we're getting there. Just another second. It's made in seconded. Now comments.
Mr. President, I'm unable to support this approval because of experience my cluster had in attempting to get with the support of the covenants staff the convenience center at Soapstone to be improved or renovated consistent with our covenants obligation. And so my cluster would hang me by the thumbs if I didn't express the disappointment in the current situation. So I'm going to be voting no.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none? Asking a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Five. Director Lanza?
Aye.
And six in favor, against? One in favor and abstaining.
One against. One abstention, one against. You said one in favor. I said one.
Oh, okay. Six in favor, one against, one abstaining. Okay.
Move to approve Dorothy Hoffman for the position of member to the elections committee.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Are there any comments? Hearing none. Moves the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Five. Director Lanza?
Aye.
And six in favor, against? One in favor and abstaining.
One against. One abstention, one against. You said one in favor. I said one.
Oh, okay. Six in favor, one against, one abstaining. Okay.
Move to approve Dorothy Hoffman for the position of member to the elections committee.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Are there any comments? Hearing none. Moves the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven in favor. Director Santa?
Abstain.
And seven zero one.
Okay. Move to approve Herb Williams-Befo to the position of board member to the Friends of Reston for Community Projects Incorporated for a term of three years.
Second.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Got six in favor. Seven in favor. Director Lanza?
Aye.
It's unanimous of all intenants.
Okay. Move to approve Todd Zenicola for the position of board member to the Friends of Reston for Community Projects Incorporated for a term of three years.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. And questions or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Director, it's unanimous.
Did you, I have a motion regarding the management agreement.
Oh, and I, we have one more motion.
Oh, I, move to approve Jalal Mahtar for the position of vice chair to the legal committee.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Any questions or concerns? I have questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is six so far in favor. Director Lanza?
Aye.
And seven in favor, against? And one abstention. So seven zero one.
Two minutes.
All right. Do we not have a covenants member? Okay, so now we need new business for the...
Mr. President, before we move on, I move to direct staff to develop the standard operating procedure for the consideration by the board of management agreements, requests for management agreements from members regarding storm water, storm water management.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Questions or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Director Lanza?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous of all intenants.
We have one more minute to get through new business.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the agenda for the July 24, 2025 board meeting as published in our materials. Why are we accept, accept the June 5, 2025 special meeting minutes? They were in tonight's package. Did we not act on them tonight already?
They're part of the consent calendar.
That was a special meeting on the lights, and you had it in the package.
It wasn't on the consent list.
Yeah, but it's in the package that you got.
Okay, so we'll do it next time.
That's fine. You just have to, Mr. President, you just have to put them in the package for next time.
It's 11:15.
Move to extend the meeting for two minutes.
Second. It's made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, okay.
I'm moving, I'm moving the agenda items. I don't see any changes. Did you?
I have one change to make. I had a conversation with the Fairfax County Police this week, and they would like us to take up the question of trespass letters, and I'd like us to have that conversation.
Isn't that executive session matters? That would be an executive session matter because we want consultation with counsel. I'm happy to have the conversation executive session, but trespass letters are, that is a legal matter.
But we're not talking about anybody specific. Tony, what do you think?
I think it could be both. I think there's a governance issue. The question is, are we going to blanket trespass? And that's a, that's a question of, are we, are we in the business of doing that? We can certainly go into executive session and discuss legal consequences ramifications.
But it's something we should also talk about publicly. So I'd like to add this to the agenda for next time.
Aye.
Mr. President, I'd like to add one item, which is the extension of time for the Lake Equity Working Group to render its report.
Director Dusuk?
I'd like to add a standing, a standing agenda item after volunteer interviews called committee and work group updates. That way, if anything comes from...
It's 11:17. 11:17.
Move to extend the meeting by two minutes.
No. I'm done being rushed, guys. I set 11:30. I motioned to extend the, the meeting to 11:30. We all know, can someone second me?
Second.
We all know that we're trying to get out of here, but one of the most important things we do is set up our meeting for next time. So take the five minutes or please exit the meeting. We need to have an agenda that makes sense. It's how you control the length of meetings. So I would like to, oh, and then we have to vote. That's my speaking to the motion.
Motion is made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five in favor. Against? Okay, five one zero.
So I would like to add a standing agenda item for committee and work group updates. That way, if anything comes from...
It's 11:17. 11:17.
Move to extend the meeting by two minutes.
No. I'm done being rushed, guys. I set 11:30. I motioned to extend the, the meeting to 11:30. We all know, can someone second me?
Second.
We all know that we're trying to get out of here, but one of the most important things we do is set up our meeting for next time. So take the five minutes or please exit the meeting. We need to have an agenda that makes sense. It's how you control the length of meetings. So I would like to, oh, and then we have to vote. That's my speaking to the motion.
Motion is made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five in favor. Against?
Aye.
Okay, five one zero.
So I would like to add a standing agenda item for committee and work group updates. That way, anything that comes from our committees or work groups can be funneled into it. If nothing for that month comes, then we, we bypass it. But it gives us a placeholder for how we communicate with our committees instead of staff having to find somewhere in the agenda to fit it. And it reminds us that, you know, committees might have made motions or they might be asking for our advice on something. It gives us a dialogue place to have it.
Thank you. I have spoken about this.
Yes.
Okay.
You're making a motion.
So I would like to add that...
As unanimous consent.
I would, asking unanimous consent to add that after volunteer interviews on all board agenda.
Point of order. That's a purview of the president.
No, we consider. The agenda is, is in the control of the board body, Mr. President.
They can afford me to do it. This is fine. I'm good with it.
We've already talked about it, so I don't think he was going to object anyway.
I was going to second him.
I would also like to add to the agenda the treasures report or financial report because we do them once a month, and it's usually the second half of the month meeting. So it's, to me, it's a standard topic that got accidentally missed.
Is that to follow the CEO update?
We can put it anywhere you guys want, but yes, maybe after the CEO update, and we call it informational. I mean, I'm not looking for dialogue. It's just a standard. It's a financial package we get every month.
I'm asking for unanimous consent on that also.
Unanimous consent, please.
Any objections? I don't see any. Okay.
Does it make sense to move the 990 text?
All right, thanks. We are back from executive session. I think we've got some motion.
All right, unanimous consent to extend the meeting to end at 11:15.
Second.
unanimous consent, we don't need any objection. We just need to look for objections. I see no objections. Let's go.
All right, move that the Reston Association Board of Director certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a contractual nature involving personnel matters or involving consultation with counsel were discussed during or considered by the board during executive session.
Second.
Motion is made in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Director Lanza?
He is.
He's on.
He's unmuted too.
Now he's muted?
Now he's muted.
Now he's muted.
Seven in favor, by the way.
Oh, he's back.
Director Lanza, where do you stand?
Aye.
It's unanimous of all intenants.
Move to approve Karen Anton for the position of vice chair to the covenants committee.
Second.
Motion is made in... Motion is made in second.
Mr. President, I'm not able to support this nomination.
I haven't taken else for comments yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, we're getting there. Just another second. It's made in seconded. Now comments.
Mr. President, I'm unable to support this approval because of experience my cluster had in attempting to get with the support of the covenants staff, the convenience center at Soapstone, to be improved or renovated consistent with our covenants obligation. And so my cluster would hang me by the thumbs if I didn't express the disappointment in the current situation. So I'm going to be voting no.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none. Asking a question. All in favor? Four.
Aye.
Five. Director Lanza?
Aye.
And six in favor, against? One in favor and abstaining.
One against. One abstention, one against. You said one in favor, I said one.
Oh, okay. Six in favor, one against, one abstaining. Okay, all right.
Move to approve Dorothy Hoffman for the position of member to the elections committee.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Are there any comments? Hearing none. Moves the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven in favor. Director Shanta?
Abstain.
And seven zero one.
Okay, move to approve Herb Williams-Befo to the position of board member to the Friends of Reston for Community Projects Incorporated for a term of three years.
Second.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Got six in...
Aye.
Seven in favor. Director Lanza?
Aye.
It's unanimous of all intenants.
Okay, move to approve Todd Zinacola for the position of board member to the Friends of Reston for Community Projects Incorporated for a term of three years.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded.
Second.
And questions or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Director, it's unanimous.
Did you... I have a motion regarding the management agreement.
Oh, and I... We have one more motion.
Oh.
I have... Move to approve Jalal Mahtar for the position of vice chair to the legal committee.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Any questions or concerns? I have questions. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that is six so far in favor. Director Lanza?
Aye.
And seven in favor, against, and one abstention. So seven zero one. All right. Do we not have a covenants member? Okay, so now we need new business for the...
Mr. President, before we move on.
Yours.
I move to direct staff to develop the standard operating procedure for the consideration by the board of management agreements, requests for management agreements from members regarding stormwater, stormwater management.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Questions or concerns? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Director Lanza?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous of all intenants. We have one more minute to get through new business.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the agenda for the July 24, 2025 board meeting as published in our materials. Why are we accept the June 5, 2025 special meeting minutes? They were in tonight's package. Did we not act on them tonight already?
There, President, can I counter?
That was a special meeting on the lights, and you had it in the package.
It wasn't on the...
It wasn't on the consent list. I understand that.
Not for this meeting.
Yeah, but it's in the package that you got.
Okay, so we'll do it next time.
That's fine. You just have to, Mr. President, you just have to put them in the package for next time.
It's 11:15.
Move to extend the meeting for two minutes.
Second. It's made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, okay.
I'm moving the agenda items. I don't see any changes. Did you?
I have one change to make. I had a conversation with the Fairfax County Police this week, and they would like us to take up the question of trespass letters, and I'd like us to have that conversation.
Isn't that executive session matters? That would be an executive session matter because we want consultation with counsel. I'm happy to have the conversation executive session, but trespass letters are... That is a legal matter.
But we're not talking about anybody specific. Tony, what do you think?
I think it could be both. I think there's a governance issue. Question is, there would be more blanket trespass, and that's a question of, are we in the business of doing that? We can certainly go into executive session and discuss legal consequences ramifications.
But it's something we should also talk about publicly. So I'd like to add this to the agenda for next.
Aye.
Mr. President, I'd like to add one item.
Okay.
Which is the extension of time for the Faith Equity Working Group to render its report. Director, is it...
I'd like to add a standing agenda item after volunteer interviews called committee and work group updates. That way, if anything comes from...
It's 11:17. 11:17.
Move to extend the meeting by two minutes.
No. I'm done being rushed, guys. I set 11:30. I motioned to extend the meeting to 11:30. We all know... Can someone second me?
Second.
We all know that we're trying to get out of here, but one of the most important things we do is set up our meeting for next time. So take the five minutes or please exit the meeting. We need to have an agenda that makes sense. It's how you control the length of meetings. So I would like to... Oh, and then we have to vote. That's my speaking to the motion.
Motion is made seconded. All in favor? Five in favor, against?
Aye.
Okay, five one zero.
So I'd like to add a standing agenda item for committee and work group updates. That way, anything that comes from our committees or work groups can be funneled into it. If nothing for that month comes, then we bypass it. But it gives us a placeholder for how we communicate with our committees instead of staff having to find somewhere in the agenda to fit it. And it reminds us that, you know, committees might have made motions or they might be asking for our advice on something. It gives us a dialogue place to have it.
I think you and I have spoken about this.
Yes.
Okay.
You're making a motion.
So I would like to add that...
As unanimous consent.
I would... Asking unanimous consent to add that after volunteer interviews on all board agenda.
Yes.
Point of order. That's per view of the president.
No, we consent it. The agenda is in the control of the body, Mr. President.
They can afford me to do it. This is fine. I'm good with it.
We've already talked about it, so I don't think he was going to object anyway.
I was going to second you.
I would also like to add to the agenda the treasures report or financial report because we do them once a month, and it's usually the second half of the month meeting. So to me, it's a standard topic that got accidentally missed.
Is that to follow the CEO update?
We can put it anywhere you guys want, but yes, maybe after the CEO update, and we call it informational. I mean, I'm not looking for dialogue. It's just a standard. It's a financial package we get every month.
I ask for unanimous consent on that also.
Unanimous consent, please.
All right, any objections? I don't see any. Okay. Does it make sense to move the 990 tax matter following to another meeting?
To the... No, we don't want to...
No, to move it.
That one we get fined on if we don't get it in on that.
To the head of the... In front of the...
Oh, he's saying after.
Board recommendations.
That makes sense to me. I'm fine with that.
You have two economic, financial matters taking care of it. Okay.
And one more thing. I don't... I appreciate that you had the conversation with Fairfax County, and I don't... I'm fine taking that up, but I went through, and we have 17 outstanding items that some have been waiting for months to get to. And so I continue to be hesitant to take on new things when we are not working to clear out the list of the other items that are on here. I will wait one more month because we're going to get a list from staff, and hopefully that will help us keep us organized, but we have a lot of stuff going on. So I will vote in favor for it this time, but if we bring up new topics in the future, I'll be more hesitant to add them to the agenda.
All right. I appreciate that.
And, Mr. President, I think we really seriously have to consider having special meetings to catch up with these 17 items, and it may be that we want to schedule a... And it may be that we want to schedule a regular meeting, an additional regular meeting to catch up with these 17 items.
Well, let's look at the 17 items and see what we need to do.
Just small committee.
Yeah. Let's review the 17.
But if we do it as a regular board meeting, we don't have... If we do a special, we're restricted to the items that are in that agenda.
I hear you. I don't want to discuss this this late.
Neither do I.
We're going to have a full gun. I'm sorry?
We're going to have a full gun.
Yes. So, well, no, we did it by unanimous consent.
No, we added her.
We did all these. Do we get a motion?
Still have to have the vote on the agenda.
Do we get a motion?
I made the motion.
Did we get it seconded?
It was seconded.
Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.
But those of us who remain.